And you're live.
Good evening and welcome to the September 8th Dublin City Council work session. So this evening's format will be a work session format. So we will not necessarily be taking public comment this evening. But this meeting is available for public viewing. So I'd like to go ahead and call the meeting to order Jenny would, would please call roll.
Vice Mayor DeRosa.
Here.
Mr. Keeler.
Yeah.
Ms. Fox.
Here.
Ms. Aludo. Mr. Peterson.
Here.
Mayor Amrose rooms.
Here, thank you. Homer has the pledge for us this evening. Is that correct Homer?
Yes, I do. Sorry, I think I clicked one too many times there. Let me try that again. Are you seeing the flag?
Not, it was up for a second and then it was gone.
Okay, there we go.
Got it now.
Okay. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands. One nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you Homer. Okay, this evening we have a few topics we're going to attempt to tackle. We will be talking about the council chamber addition. So as, as we all talked about previously Greg, Jane and I have been working with our design team on the council chamber. So they're going to give us an update Sharon and Sig Dave is with her are going to walk us through where we are to date. And then we will have a brief discussion on those items and then we will move into the CIP information. So without further ado with Horn and King, we have Sharon and Dave King. So Sharon, please feel free to take it away.
Okay, thanks for having us tonight. We are going to share with you the finishes for the building. And we have a slide presentation of all the finishes since we're not there in person to show you the actual samples. We made a PowerPoint presentation to show you different finishes. We're just going to go through some of the key spaces in the building. This first space is the gallery space. When you walk into the building, this is the east-west wide hallway that has windows to the south. And in this space, we will have a terrazzo floor, which will mostly be white with some gray, some sparkle glass, and just a hint of green in the terrazzo. The ceiling tile will be large grid. It will be a four foot by nine foot ceiling grid with a very smooth, almost dry wool texture. With the windows that we have are a light bronze color. This matches the existing windows on the existing building. The main paint color throughout the project will be a bright white, slightly off-white color. And the trim work, the columns, cabinetry, any woodwork is going to be a nice black matte black finish. The next space off of the main gallery is the snug, which is what we're calling the kitchenette area. It has a nice large island to gather around and cabinetry, which hides a full refrigerator. There'll also be a trash area sink and the ice maker in this area. We also have the terrazzo continues into the space, the same ceiling tile in this area that will have a lower ceiling, a four by four ceiling, same paint color. We have an accent paint color, which would be on the wall around the cabinetry as a highlight. The black cabinetry again in here on the island legs itself will have a onlay, a wood decal that's going on each of the corners of the leg that will be painted the same color as the black cabinetry that will be built in just a slight hint of the Dublin Irish theme. The countertops in here will be this nice crisp quartz countertop with some light gray veining in it. In this space, we also have some details from the Brazen Head restaurant that we were able to salvage from architectural salvage. We'll have some stained glass windows that are looking from the snug into other spaces that will be backlit. We also have a long sign above the cabinetry that was from Brazen Head will be repainted and will say something like welcome to Dublin or Dublin, Ohio on it that will go up above the cabinetry itself. This next space is the lobby, which will have lots of doors and windows to the south out to the green space outside and the colonnade towards the north will enter into the council chamber itself. Again, the terrazzo will extend into this space. We have a different ceiling in here, slight upgrade in here. It's almost a tin shaped ceiling tile. It will be white. It has a good three dimension pattern in that it'll be a two foot by two foot square. Same paint color in here and window color. The columns and trim work will be black. We have again some Brazen Head details that will be in there, these brackets. And we also have more stained glass window that will be in the upper windows in between the lobby and the chamber. This is in the chamber itself, looking south, looking out the doors to the lobby and then out towards the outside. We have carpet in this space to help with the sound. It's a light gray, slight tan, almost a plaid carpet in this area. The same ceiling tile that's out in the lobby itself. Paint color, the windows, the trim work will be black again. Looking north in the space at the dais area, the raised area where you will be sitting will have some accent color behind you with some added trim work. That color hasn't been specifically determined yet, but it will be a darker gray color, something that will be good for when you're being filmed. That'll be a good background color for you. The top of the dais wall itself will have a nice walnut wood top in it to bring some warmth into the space. And the countertop that will actually be where you're working will be this light gray concrete top. And then we also have some different satin nickel finishes that will be in this space. The door hardware itself, possibly the light fixtures will have this metal finish. And then behind you in that middle trimmed out panel will be a larger version of the seal that you currently have in your space. We're working on the exact details of that, but we're thinking something in the cast stone that would be mounted on the wall behind you. This is the executive session room, your conference area. The table will be made by one of your own members and that is incredibly amazing. So we're excited about that. Yay, we have the same carpet that's going into that space. The same ceiling tile and wall color will probably have some accent wall paint in there. Maybe on the side west wall have an accent on there, window color. You have building cabinetry in both the north and the south wall of this room. The countertop on those areas will be that same white quartz countertop with the gray veining. That is the image depicting what the table could possibly look like. I'm not sure exactly what wood will be used there, but a nice wood with the wide edge and the graining that you'll see in there. And then we will be reusing the seal that you currently have in your space on that west wall of your room. This is a typical office space. We'll have the carpet in there. It will have a regular ceiling tile in there that will look like a two by two ceiling grid. Paint color windows, the furniture, we're looking at probably a walnut type finished furniture in those spaces. So just to recap, you're kind of growing on top of the typical wall color, the terrazzo with some green, the carpet with the grays, the window, the wall colors, cabinets. So it just all starts to grow into a whole family of finishes that we have. And then some wood tones to warm it up a little bit. And then those are all of the different ones labeled. If anyone's curious to see exactly what those are, they're listed there if you want to find out more about any of these particular colors. Do you have any questions? I know we went through that really fast.
I have a question. First of all, great job everyone, Jane, Greg, Chris and Sharon as well. Would it be possible for you to superimpose the finishes on the 3D renderings? I like the finishes. It would just, for me, it would be more helpful to actually see the 3D rendering with those colors. Is that possible?
It is possible to do. I'm not sure how possible it is to do in the timeframe that we have since we're silly is looking for a lot of these answers relatively quickly.
Okay, that's fine. As I said, I like the finishes. It would just be helpful to visualize it in the snug that I don't know whether it's called a trinity knot or what that symbol is. I assume that that is, it appears to be wood.
Yes.
And you would apply it to the four upright posts that are holding up that island?
Yes, it would be on the top two outside corners of each of the legs of the island. And then it would be done with the cabinetry people themselves. The cabinets are all being custom made and that would be applied and finished along with the cabinetry. So the part of the cabinetry itself.
My only suggestion there would be apply the finishes and then apply those afterwards and leave them in a natural state, finished with lacquer or something to protect it. But to me, it's cool enough that it would be better to have it stand out. I'm afraid it would get lost in the black. So that's just my opinion. I obviously like natural wood and you've got a lot of the black finishes, which are really cool. But if you could keep those natural, have them clear lacquered and then applied to the finish afterwards. That's how I.
Sandy, I also wanted to Sharon, where you are going to put together a storyboard with the materials, correct? That you were going to be leaving into, into the, our existing conference room? Is that still the direction we're headed?
Still do that, yes. If it's something that you guys feel that you need to see them in person and feel and see and feel them, then we can certainly gather these all up and bring them to the conference room.
So if that's something y'all were interested in and you think you'd stop by and take advantage of it, we had asked Sharon to go ahead and put that together.
Where is that going to be?
We were going to put it in our existing conference room there where our mailboxes are at present.
Okay.
I think that'd be cool, pretty great.
Okay. I think it's absolutely lovely. I think it's going to come together very nice. That's a lot of hard work. I so appreciate it. I had one question in the, I guess it would be the entryway or maybe it's opposite the snug here. I know there was some conversation about some, and I don't want to use say cabinetry or glass or whatever, to put some gifts and historic artifacts and this and that. What's the latest thinking about where would that be and how would you manage that?
We're still looking at that and that would be in this gallery space. It would be at the opposite end of what this view is showing. Right now that's on hold because I know Chris and Jane were looking at discussing exactly what items would be going into that case and what would be going on the walls and the different things that we'd be bringing into the building. And then what requirements would be needed for that, both in size, if we needed to have protective glass, different things like that. So they were going to reach out to the historical society, I believe, and gather that type of information before we move forward with that. But we definitely have space set aside for a whole display case on the east end of this gallery.
Right, and I know there's lots of interesting ways to do that and make it dynamic and all of that. I was just curious where it was. So I think it's gorgeous. The furniture, have you decided on that or is that too early?
The furniture we've been working on, we've had a couple of meetings. We have another meeting scheduled in about a month from now to look at more furniture. It's definitely a process that we're going through.
And I know now one of the important factors is how well it can be cleaned, right? So managing that narrows some things down or opens things up. I don't know which it is, but I know that's a, that's a big issue right now. So I think it's fabulous. Thank you all. It's beautiful.
One of the things I thought I'd mentioned that Chris and I talked about, well, we all talked about our last meeting was that as you, as you come in, there are elements about the, the space that tell the story of Dublin. And Chris, you might mention this, but trying to decide what to put, the big Ohio, state of Ohio sign is going to be, that's an old artifact that we have as you walk in the entrance way. The back of it, I think it's going to be, and Chris, you, you tell me if this is right or not, but some of the wood from the original city hall where the chamber is being remodeled is going to be taken out of there and we're going to use that old wood as a backdrop for that, that state of Ohio sign. So as you move through this, the new council chambers, there'll be elements of history along the way that tell a story. Like that's where the brazen head kind of comes in and, and as you come in and we're going to try to find ways that you can actually learn about it as you, as you walk through the building. So there'll be little vignettes or nuances that speak to the history of the place. And so I think that's kind of an interesting adventure as you, as you visit the city hall. Chris, I don't know, is it true that we'll be able to get that wood?
So yes, as we were talking, contemplating what would happen in that kind of the, the between the two airlock doors as you enter into the building. You know, I thought it would be particularly special if we brought something, the original city hall building for the town, the village, city hall building is that front room that is part of the Chamber of Commerce building, that small building that sets out on the street, which is actually an old log cabin that has been covered up over the years. And I, it was my, my thinking that it would be really neat to bring something from the original city hall into this space so that we would have a connection of where we've come from and where we're going. So I reached out to Bill Andrews and told him what I was thinking and he was very pleased because he just got a new chainsaw. And so he was looking forward to, we talked about different wood elements from that building that might be available. You know, as you know, the chamber building is going to be undergoing some renovations as well. And there's some opportunity there to reclaim some of the original structure. So he's going to be doing that. We are going to be keeping in touch. And I told him that we needed an eight by eight, 10 by 10 sort of section for a backdrop for this. And we will gather it from there and install it here in the new entrance way. So that when you walk in, the first thing that greets you is our history, our foundation of who we are. And as you move through the building, it'll kind of be like walking through our journey a little bit to tell the story of where we've been and where we're going. So with that, I don't know if there's other questions, comments, thoughts. Certainly happy to hear as many as you want to share. And then Sharon will, will be gathering those materials and placing them in our existing executive session room for you to get up close and personal and make sure that you're comfortable with finishes. We, you know, we went through the space allocation several, I think a couple of months ago. We went through the space allocation and, and now we're down to finishes, so.
It's really beautiful. You guys did an amazing job. Thank you for all of your hard work and for representing council through this process. I know it was a lot, but you guys did a phenomenal job.
Jane's been a mastermind.
I don't know about that, but I do, but I do think there's one thing that I love most about the place is that one is the, is the story it tells. And secondly, is the fact that it causes you to want to stay a little while. I think it will become the front room of the city, the living room of the city, especially with the portico and the porch. And when we finish up Kaufman Park renovations and all the things that we have planned there, I feel like it will become such a wonderful community gathering place. And I think with the snug being a little welcoming spot to sit and talk to, to each other, to council, to talk to the people that live in the city, to gather here and have events. I think it's going to be a wonderful, it's more than a council chambers. It's, it's the home of the city. So I'm really excited to see it come together.
Sharon or Chris, whoever would know, in the executive session conference room, there's the table itself. And then there's a smaller table that appears to be maybe like a bench top or a bar top with bar stools. I can't really tell what that table is. That's the one on the right.
Yes, it is a tall top. It's sort of an island that doesn't have any cabinetry under it. It would be for extra staff members. Sometimes you have other staff that comes in besides council that might be sitting in for a discussion and they could have the stools on the other side of that island and watch a presentation or be part of a discussion. It is, could act as an island if you needed more layout space to look at any documents or food or whatever you have going on. So it acts as an island, but also as an extra table for overflow seating.
And it's open on the bottom. There's no storage.
Correct.
Okay, thank you.
And it's movable, correct Sharon?
Yes, it's movable. It will match the black cabinetry. So the table itself that's being made will be the main focus and be the, the, you know, have the wood and be the main thing and that all the rest will be the black finishes.
Anything else?
Yeah, if you guys haven't been by there, the steel has been erected and you can start to see the size and the shape of what this addition is going to be. It's really pretty exciting, I think.
Great, well, thank you Sharon and Dave. We certainly need to move on to our CIP presentation, but we just wanted to take a few minutes and bring everybody up to speed. So we'll look forward, Sharon, when will you have those items in?
Definitely within the next couple of days. I'll email you and Jane or Jenny and let you guys know when it's there. So you guys can let everyone else know to go take a look at it.
Right, yeah, if you could get that out to Jenny, she'll distribute it to the balance of council.
Okay.
Okay, thank you so much Sharon and Dave. Have a wonderful evening. You probably don't want to stay for our CIP presentation, but you're welcome to if you choose to.
Thanks.
Okay, um, next is going to be a discussion regarding five-year CIP. And I believe that Dana is going to get us started with that. So welcome, there you say his name and there he is. Welcome Dana and please take it away.
Good evening, members of council. Thanks for your time this evening to do a follow-up work session on the proposed five-year capital improvement program, years 2021 through 2025. Our focus tonight is to respond to and have time to discuss some of the items, questions that came up in your previous work session about the proposed capital budget. We did provide to you a written response, which was made available, I believe, a week ago today, thereabouts. And so hopefully you've had some time to look at that. But what we have tonight, and I see Matt's already shared his screen as we have a, as we would always have, a PowerPoint to help, just kind of help guide the conversation and maybe provide a little bit of structure to it. And we're not going to recap all that, you know, was presented, but I think we have prepared here what I perceive to be really the highlights of interest that you had at this last meeting and more specifically trying to address some of the specific questions that you had. It's not to say that we've got all those. Certainly if we did not capture them, we'll, we'll do our best to respond to those if there's something we missed. So with that, we're going to kind of tag team this with different staff members. I'm going to kick off here. If that's okay, we'll go on to the next slide then. Matt, this is just a reminder of our process. As you can see, we're here at September the 8th at this work session workshop. Next Monday, it's your regularly scheduled meeting will be a second hearing. Obviously you do not have to pass this next Monday. We'll see how things go tonight. There would be a, we'll call it a third hearing or another CIP discussion slated for September 28th if needed. We'll see how things go this evening and maybe we'll call a, a little bit of a huddle here at the end in terms of steps going forward and whether or not, you know, staff would be able to turn around to meet Monday's meeting or not. But we've got time, we've got some flexibility, obviously, to, to respond to this. So, so no need to rush here. So anyway, next slide is, just trying to connect, I had been asked to try to connect the, the CIP to council goals. In the written document we provided, there's much more information. This just highlights what those goals are. I really view council's goals as four primary ones right now. There are many more still hanging out there from the past, as you know, as you're, in your previous retreat that you had earlier this year, there are certainly other ones still out there, but these are the, what I would call the prominent goals. I won't go into these in great detail. We did write and respond to those in what we provided you last week. I would just highlight a few things. So as far as the ensuring fiscal strength and sustainability, you recall you adopted an economic development plan this last, this last year. That is put well into motion. Much of that really winds up being in the operating budget, I believe programmatically. However, as we all know, that how well the city is maintained and then obviously the investments in the city's infrastructure are key to attracting as well as retaining, expanding and creating new companies and jobs here in the city of Dublin. So all of what we propose, or a lot of what we propose here are very focused on trying to drive our fiscal strength and the sustainability of that. The most connected community in the U.S. is a goal that we still have a high priority on. I did outline in what we provided generally where we are on that. I took the liberty to put some emphasis in this where I talked about the need to continue our work at, with first engaging with and trying to sort of understand or obtain a gap analysis of where we are as a community with our internet service providers. That, that is well underway. There's been a great dialogue that Doug and others have been having on that. We will be prepared to talk much more about that in detail just a little bit later in the year. It's very important that we understand the current condition of our connectedness, if you will, prior to pursuing any other portions of this goal. We have to or must assess and to maximum extent possible, include the internet service providers in that conversation. And so pretty sensitive to that in the sense that, you know, when we go to budget, how we're going to achieve this, they very much need to be a part of that. Also, I thought Doug had done a great job just prior to your recess back in June of giving you a memo updating some of the beta level activity that's been going on relative to this goal. Some of the other activity that, that he's been involved with and others to try to bring this to fruition. So that information is really also not only in the capital budget, but would also be reflected in the operating budget. The third one here to innovate and enhance the city's services using big data and better analytics. We are making progress there. As you recall, you had set some specific goals last year around this. We continue to, to work on those. A lot of that is tied to our modernization and mobilization efforts to get data. Some of this is transitioning from some Some of this is transitioning from some of the legacy um, programs that we've had to to more, uh, system-wide type, uh, programs that we've been putting into place and updating. At the same time, though, we've been working towards a data platform, which we've talked about previously, and we continue to make some strides there. Uh, council in the operating budget, as an example, did make a good investment here this last year with creating an office of performance analytics. And Brandon Brown, who is our director there, uh, continues to, uh, work on that. We are uh, likely, uh, to propose in the 21 operating budget a little bit more capacity in this office to achieve some of those. Uh, the end of, in the end state of what you want out of this goal. So, um, we continue to work it. Uh, we're not resting on it. And I would appreciate your support. But again, this is another one that lends itself not only to capital budget, but also as much, uh, in the operating budget. And then the last one is developing the Dublin 2035 framework, which I think was probably the new and uh, significant goal that came out of this last, um, retreat that you had. And you're pretty well aware of where we are with that and moving forward. There's been recent dialogue, and I do think that, um, there'll be more updates here uh, in the very near future. And I do believe, uh, much of this uh, or cost related to this particular process will be more so found in the operating budget than in the capital budget. So I hope that some of that was at least helpful for council to make sure you understand that we do, uh, when we develop both capital budgets and operating budgets, we are connecting to these goals. I would also suggest that the five strategic focus areas that we have, and you've probably heard of uh, many times over, we also connect to those as well. So unless there are any questions on these specifically, obviously, we may cover some of that as we move along tonight and revisit some of the questions and comments that you had. So with that, we'll go on to the to the next slide. Um, so, uh, this is a very busy one, but was in the information that we had provided you. Uh, much of what we wanted to achieve here is the questions that were brought up the last time about technology and particularly information technology as it relates to the operating and capital budget. And I think one of the comments made was, you know, to what extent is is technology or information technology more specifically a slice of the pie, if you will, of the overall capital budget? The thing that I most wanted to remind council is that it takes both the operating budget and the capital budget to really understand the the emphasis and the, uh, the activity that's going on here relative to technology. Uh, we provided, uh, quite a bit of information and breakdown. Uh, in the information we provided last week, we have some of that and some follow-on slides to highlight here. But the so out of this slide is that, um, you know, over time, we have increased the amount of investment both in the, um, uh, operating side of the budget as well as the capital budget in terms of, um, increased amount of dollars put towards, uh, technology. Um, I, I believe that our, um, yeah, our, um, operating budget had increased, uh, to the tune of 26% uh, in terms of IT and technology initiatives uh, since 2017, and the capital budget has increased as much as 31% uh, relative to our efforts in information, information technology. Uh, now that's kind of spread throughout the budget in different ways or in the budgets, um, involving a lot of different things of which we can, we can, we can highlight here as we go forward just in the next couple of slides. So, um, unless there are specific questions here, maybe it might be best if we go to the next couple of slides and I'll let a couple of staff, folks from staff, maybe highlight some of these items that that were shown. So.
Dana?
Yes, Pam.
Before we move on, could you go back a sec? So, so my question, when I looked at this, I I see that there was budget dollars increases, but the actuals are absolutely flat from 17 to 18 to 19, right? 2.8, uh, 4.8, 4.8, 4.8 actual spend. So has there been a challenge that we just haven't been able to? We don't have the staff to spend that budget that? I, I mean, when I look at the actuals, I see the aspiration in the budget, but I don't see it playing out. And my question was, why is that?
Some of this has to do with timing. Some of that has to do with carryover. Some of it, as you know, as an IT person, uh, yourself, is how well the implementation of various programs go. Sometimes that exceeds expectations. Sometimes it doesn't. Uh, so the spend will follow with that. Uh, generally speaking, yeah, our aspiration has been high. Our execution has been, I would say our execution's been pretty good. I mean, if you look at the list of all the different things that we have done over the last several years relative to these budgets, I think our staff has done a great job of implementation. I will, um, ask either Doug and or Mark and or Matt to weigh in on any of those. In fact, we had this very similar conversation about this ourselves, so.
And we could do that as you go through it. That's fine. I would just say my observation is that I see the aspiration and I don't know what's what's not allowing us to maybe get there in terms of the spend. I think the staff's done an incredible job. I I'm just you know, and I think maybe, um, some of my fellow councilmen members share this, that we're just excited to continue to invest forward here and wondered um, if there are obstacles that are stopping us from doing that. So we can address that as we go through.
Yeah, it's a terrific question, and I'll ask, uh, Doug and or Mark, um, if they want to comment on that. And obviously, we can the next couple of slides will over some of the more detail, but that's a good question at this point, if they want to try to address that.
I, o- only to confirm Kathy that yes, there is not a specific barrier that has caused that to happen. So there's not an easy answer to it. Uh, there are a number of different things which have made uh, spending be where they are. One of them is just being conscientious. So, um, hey, I do think that we can move forward unless you have another question. Um, but yes, there is, there has not been one thing or a couple of things that we could point to and say this is a problem and why that spending is where it is.
Can I just ask a a question, uh, just to have a understanding of what? Um, there's like in eight, 19, and then in 20 miscellaneous contractual services and at about a million dollars. I'm just kind of curious what that is because that's about 20% of the budget.
Yeah, Jane, this is Mark Clark, uh, Director IT Operations. That that miscellaneous contractual services, um, is used primarily, uh, to designate is a designate for our hosted services so that we could track that specifically.
Okay, thank you.
All right, why don't we move along on a couple of slides? And that might also help to inform that that question as well. So Doug or Matt, Mark, if you want to take these on.
Yeah, I guess I'll start since I'm at the top of the page. Um, this is really just a snapshot of some things we do internally to enable our internal departments and divisions to support the residents. Um, we're getting a lot accomplished, and to answer Kathy's question a moment ago, um, I don't feel like we have any real obstacles, which is, you know, as outlined in our memo, um, just ask for continued support as we mature our program and our internal operations.
Yeah, and I would add on there, uh, over the last few years, we have had a number of large projects that have cycles that sometimes can go more than 12 months. And we have encumbered, uh, funds that did, as Dana mentioned, uh, last into another year. Um, and we do think that we've been efficient on many of those things. There has also been, which I think we've talked about in the recent past, uh, some significant shifts from capital expenditures to operating as we have moved to the cloud. Uh, when I first came in, we, we made a concerted effort to move from a lot of different kinds of software packages around the city to larger, more enterprise systems that are not necessarily sitting in our data center. They're sitting in a cloud center someplace. And so we've seen that shift. And finance asked us to help do that a little bit more gradually than all immediately. And some of the, uh, the contractual services ha- have to do with that as well. So we made a decision to make a shift and you see that show up if you look across time. Um, some of the connected Dublin projects are listed here to give you an idea. We recognize that you may not have seen some of these or seen where they fall in the budget. You may have heard of a few of these. We had a good conversation about augmented reality. Uh, we have a smart city dashboard, uh, experiment that you haven't seen yet. Um, the Dublin information bot is something that we've worked on that is, uh, ready to go. You haven't seen that yet. This is all money that has already been spent. And we're trying to coordinate its rollout, which is more of an operating activity. So, uh, we wanted to put this in front of you, but it it does not, you won't find this. The dollar amounts are so low that it does not jump out at you in the capital budget. Um, so as we move forward, uh, we can talk more about that.
Doug, while I have you, I have one question. In your September 1 dated memo of, on page two of 19, under, uh, the second to last sentence, under bullet point three, innovate and enhance city services using big data and better analytics. There's a sentence in there. I'm wondering if you can help me understand maybe where we are with it. It says, staff did engage external assistance to perform forecasting using data analytics with some less than helpful results. Uh, with the support of council, the city established a new division of performance analytics in 2020. Is that, is that the data platform that we're working on, or is that some, uh, something else?
That was something else. Uh, with that, and that's a bit harsh of my, uh, assessment of it when I say less than helpful. We did learn from that. But the city did a machine learning experiment in which we wanted to do some, uh, predictive analytics on finance data. Uh, you may remember a couple of years ago, uh, we had been asked to really dig into uh, revenue projection capabilities. And, uh, we did quite a lot of work to try and use a machine learning model with tax revenue data to predict, uh, what our revenues would be in a year, uh, uh, using three years worth of data, for example. The results of that is that those results were very accurate. They just weren't more accurate than what the people in our finance department were already doing. And so, uh, we did learn from that, and we learned that we were not at the level of maturity that we needed to be at with our data to be able to spread that citywide. So we made a strategic decision to actually do the performance analytics and develop the data platform so that we could more extensively do, do those kind of analytical exercises. But it was a success. It's just, it didn't actually beat the humans that we have. Um, and we didn't have a strategy to make use of it. So we pulled back a little bit and developed that strategy, and that's how we got to where we are today.
Thank you. Appreciate that.
Uh, the next slide is kind of connected with this one, so, uh, if you're okay with that, Dana, and and, uh, Megan can chime in at any time, but we wanted to also highlight how smart mobility is a part of the larger picture. So when you're seeing smart city, smart mobility, it's really hard to divide those. And also a conversation about the 33 smart mobility corridor and beta district. Um, it's difficult to separate the region and what we are doing with the council of governments with what we're doing in Dublin, because we really designed it so that companies could work within our region and not really know the difference, uh, between uh, on the 33 smart mobility corridor. We wanted a company to be able to utilize the entire corridor. And then, you know, uh, connected Marysville would have some projects which are specific to them and connected Dublin has some projects which are specific to us. So on the previous slide, you saw some of those connected Dublin projects like our, uh, augmented reality and our, uh, identity authority. Those kinds of things are really very specific to Dublin. But some of our smart mobility, you'll see, uh, connects to the rest of the region. Uh, and if I'm not stealing Megan's thunder there, like I say, you can jump in there anytime. Um, you you've heard i- in the past, much of what we're doing with, uh, roadside units, cameras and radar in our connected intersections, and you have those bullets down there talking about that. Our partnership with Drive Ohio and those things, these things don't really show up in the IT budget outside of, say, uh, fiber. So fiber enhancements and some of the fiber money that was in, uh, our, our, uh, public works budget were used to enhance and repair and upgrade some of those intersections and put new equipment there. So that's just sort of drawing that out. And then the council of governments, uh, you may recall, it's been a year ago where we showed how the onboard units uh, can use in-vehicle human machine interfaces. It really just looks like a tablet inside the vehicle. Um, but that work was done and is kind of ongoing. And then we had some prep work when that connected vehicle environment is more mature for the 33 smart mobility corridor. Uh, the data collection environment, uh, we were tasked with preparing that environment. We are still in a, a position to work with, uh, the state on their connected vehicle environment, or we can do some things locally. Uh, but we did the work necessary to be prepared for that as the 33 smart mobility corridor is ready. And with that, I don't know if, uh, Megan, are you good with how I described that, or did you want to add anything?
No, you did a excellent job covering all that. I mean, the only thing I would add is that some of these opportunities came up very quickly, so we did jump on them as the opportunities arose, and therefore we didn't have a chance to proactively budget for them, you know, as part of the operating or capital budget. So, yeah, they never showed up, um, in any of the documents.
Doug, can I ask you a question?
Please.
Jane, um, a couple of things. One, uh, in the previous slide, uh, for someone who's not tech savvy but loves the idea of the new, uh, opportunities that technology offers, especially in communication. Um, the question would be on some of these projects, especially on the, in the information technology, but on the connected Dublin projects. Some of it to me is unidentifiable because I really don't understand what the names mean. And it would be wonderful at some point if you could give us a demonstration to show how some of these things operate. Um, that would be one. And secondly, um, that's not a question, it's kind of a request. The second one is on, uh, the next slide. And that would be on the 33 corridor and the connected Dublin piece. Um, I sit in on those 33 corridor meetings. And Marysville, I know we have our specials. We have 10 intersections. Um, we're doing the roundabout. We have some other things. Marysville's got 27 intersections. What aspirationally, aside from what we're already doing in the way of the whole smart corridor and having Dublin stand, really stand out uh, when it comes to technology, what other things about the smart corridor could Dublin be doing that maybe we're not doing yet, but you'd like to see happen?
Absolutely. Uh, so to your first question, we have been trying to think of what is the appropriate moment to demonstrate some of these things for councils. You can see there are several bullets there, and that's quite a long session. I do have some screenshots of a couple of these things so that we could show them to you. Uh, but that is our challenge is, is we do these, we begin to roll them out. Um, where is the best place for you to be able to get sort of a private audience with it? Uh, not that just what the general public gets. Um, we are trying to figure that out. Um, so, uh, I do have some slides that I can show you, uh, if the conversation goes in that direction this evening, um, but it does, does not reflect all of those things. Uh, but we do have them, and we are prepared to show many of these things. The other thing that I want to mention about this is that it has always been our plan to have monitors around the city. By which, when I say monitors, I mean big TVs hanging on the wall. And we're hoping in the new city hall that, you know, we do have the big monitor on the wall there, that we would put up like a short vignette, 15, 20 seconds showing, uh, each of these projects, and they will continue to rotate if you've been down there yet. That, I think, might be a good way that you could just sort of stop by city hall and we could stand there six feet apart, and I could show you a few of those things at your leisure. Um, but we're, we're considering those kinds of things.
The other thing. I I would like to add, if I could, to the aspirational side of that. Um, you know, the, the one thing that I I would, uh, probably put into context is, is when Marysville talks about connected Marysville, they got a very exciting project going on. They've got one primary partner there, and that's Honda. Uh, with the project that Honda rolled out for the signal connectivity. Really exciting project, uh, with, um, with, with that particular company. Uh, the one thing that that I really want to make sure that we're talking about and and, uh, both Doug and Megan have alluded to this, is the opportunities that come up, uh, much of which we have been digging up ourselves, and I I give Doug great credit for being out telling our story, which has generated a lot of interest and opportunity. And also Megan with her connections with ODOT and others in the, um, in the transportation industry. Pretty powerful team out there to, uh, driving some of these new uh, relationships, like you see the, you see these names like Fujitsu and some of the others that are testing and beta testing technologies here, and that ties into. And that ties into much of what we want to achieve. So a lot of this is at the beta level and they tend to be small. But they have great opportunities to to do just what you're saying, council member Fox, and that is, you know, to tell. You know, we do it because it's the right thing to do. We do it because we know that it brings R and D here when you talk about a Denso and others. But it also has that, the impact of us being well-known as a place to come and test. So. I really think that while these projects are pretty small right now, they're they're telling a big story out there on our behalf. So just want to make sure we got. And I just, I do, I say that really as a tribute to Doug and Megan and the and the effort that they put into this.
Yeah, thanks.
You know, I just want to say that uh, Doug, I I think it's a great idea to. There's so many interesting initiatives that you've got going on here and to have this at the uh, new city hall or even have it at rec. Center or someplace where the public can actually see all these interesting things that. Uh, you're engaged in because in technology, a lot of people just don't have any idea what we're doing and where the money's going. And I just think it's a neat thing to try to do that on a revolving uh, TV s- screen or whatever you guys work out. So. I think I think that's what makes people here proud of their city. They get to see, get to taste a little bit of all the progressive need ideas that. You and the city council and the staff are doing. So no, I I'd applaud any effort to get this kind of thing out into the public. Thank you.
Thank you for that. And uh, that is the kind of thing that when we do it, it it's in the hundreds of dollars, not the thousands. And it's not really going to show up. And these are the the kinds of things that could have a very big impact, but not necessarily so great of an expense. And one of the things that's hard for us to see inside the city is the impact we're having globally, not just around the country. And I will say our smart parking uh, project is being showcased at the telecommunications management forum. Uh, that's a global uh, kind of a conference and our partnership with Fujitsu is bearing a lot of fruit. But then also on a local level, and I did mention some of the companies uh, on the other slide there. We have a new partnership with Easy Logistics as well, who uh, we had a great meeting with uh, Mayor Amaro's Grooms. These are the kinds of uh, projects utilizing the uh, corridor, which are going to benefit the whole corridor. But are also quite Dublin specific. And there those are those standout projects. Uh, council member Fox that I think that you're talking about. We have a few of those which just, you know, Dublin winds up being the more unique. The more innovative, the more advanced, uh, due to some of the work that we're doing there.
And and Doug, also as we're as we're building this new city hall, and I know that Chris and I have been talking about the needs for the um, audio visual and all. And I I'm certainly no expert in that at all. I mean, I have a hard time figuring out how I use my smart TV. But um, are are you actively engaged in helping us develop the the best technology right now for the new city hall? Cause if you're not, you need to be. That's what I'm thinking. Cause don't leave it up to me or I I don't want to speak for Chris. But but I certainly would not even be able to imagine the kind of possibilities that we could incorporate into the new city hall. And if we don't have you there to do that with us, we need you.
Yeah, I think.
We are and I don't even know it.
Yeah, I I I think a good way of describing it is that I would not allow something to uh, uh. Go in a direction that we couldn't come back from or that we couldn't make use of because my voice wasn't there. There are some very, I I do have a voice in the room, first of all. But second of all, there are very uh, broad uh, concepts that need to be kind of followed. And what we are doing with connected Dublin types of things, they do fit. So that is, for example, great wifi. When you have great wifi, you can set up that monitor on the wall. You can put a kiosk there. Um, so we're not going to get frozen out from making a good decision later because of some design decision now. So. Um, yeah, that we're not going to have that happen.
Okay, good. I'm glad you hear that. All right. Stay connected with us.
So uh, with that Dana, I think we're done with these two slides.
Yeah, why don't we move ahead to the next? Um. Okay, so this would then take us into Riverside Crossing Park, but I uh, which I I just wanted to um, you know, make sure we were touching on all things technology. Uh, I'm not sure that we've answered all your questions, but I think the so what of what we're saying is we continue to make the investment. Obviously, execution is key. Uh, I think we're still at a pretty early point in what we're doing relative to beta district, relative to rolling out some of these technologies. Probably not at the point of scaling. I think too, it's important to remember and it was kind of alluded to, but I want to make sure I hit on this really hard. What we're trying to do in this corridor, and it's not just about the cog, but it's what Dublin's role of connected Dublin is as part of that. Is to be that place where people are going to come to or want to know that they can come to and connect in and test things. Uh, that doesn't equal big dollars for the city. In fact, our goal is to uh, leverage existing infrastructure. That we have into that effort, be it our fiber optic system, the extra capacity that we have. Be it uh, attachment to our facilities that we as a city own, leveraging it in with the knowledge of our staff, which is pretty high. High level when it comes to traffic management and the like. And a lot of times that is being done by the private investment. I mean, Denso, a number we're not showing in here is um, I believe it's one point, just shy of one point three million dollars, I think, Megan. That Denso or Doug has invested. Um, we're not showing that number, but that's their dollars, not our dollars. So. Uh, there are other projects that uh, others have invested in to put technology here. So. Uh, and they don't always want us to quantify that for them. So um, so we just, not that it's all public record at the end of the day. But it's not something we go around shouting from the mountaintops, you know, when people want to come in and do testing, which is kind of a new world. For us as a public entity and will be for the corridor as well, as we want to attract those, that kind of attention. And uh, those very kinds of things have actually brought some jobs here as well. So uh, quantifying that can sometimes be a little bit of a challenge. But there's real dollars being invested. I don't know, uh, Megan or Doug, if there's anything you want to add along those lines as well.
Yeah, I I would. Thank you Dana. That there is actually an extraordinary amount of money and resources and people and time. Being uh, spent uh, within Dublin. Uh, with Fujitsu, you'll see three projects here. We haven't paid Fujitsu any money at this point. And the uh, the other projects having to do with our data model. And the machine learning, uh, we we paid far before below market value in order to do some of these pilots. So on the one hand, looking at a pilot seems like, well, what the good does that do us? We get much of the mileage that we get for deploying a new technology without uh, doing the full uh, purchase. Necessarily of it because we are a reference community. So cultivating these relationships with these companies to come and spend their own money. To prove their own technology projects uh, is extremely valuable to us and and creating that brand and that environment. Was the strategy all along and and we're just continuing to build upon that uh, more and more and more. So. Yeah, I definitely agree with that and appreciate you remembering to bring that up Dana.
Dana, but before we we move on, um, I I would like to to circle back around to that, the budget. Um, and I I know that and applaud that pilots are um, sometimes. Uh, low cost, high impact, and especially if you're a beta site or an alpha site or whatever. Uh, I appreciate that. I I still have a reservation when I look at the capital budget for IT. And I'm 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 looking at the numbers here. So for twenty twenty, it's one point eight million, twenty twenty-one, one point nine million. Twenty twenty-two, one point eight million, and then twenty-three through twenty-five, it's one point five million. So I'm struggling. With how we're going to scale some of these when we hit on one or two of them. And I I agree that they're pilot. But over a five-year period, if we're going to be the most connected city, et cetera, so forth. I I don't know how we're going to do that when we, our actual spend is going to go down over those five years in a time when. We're likely going to move from a hundred megabit connectivity world to a one gig, right? We're going to, we're going to move to that in a five-year timeframe or something. They're close. And so I I'm still struggling with. Now, this is the operating budget, right? But I was looking at your capital budget. So between the two, I I I. I I still, I'm still struggling with, are we investing enough for the scale part of it? I get, I totally get the where we are with the pilot part, but it within five years in order to hit our most connected city. How do we do that with a flat to falling budget? I'm just struggling. I just, I don't.
Yeah, I apologize, I giggle a little bit because you were mentioning one gig. We're actually a hundred gig city.
That's what I meant. I said, I think I said a hundred, sorry. But I think I I I'm saying to the connectivity to the house. Right now, the standard is a hundred megabit, right?
Okay, so that's that's a big difference that you're mentioning there. So.
And I'm saying, what I'm saying is Dana, is that I I think when we think about being most connected, connected in Doug's work. The conversations we're having with providers is a hundred megabit. That's sort of the industry look to now. I'm saying that's going to likely grow, right? Just as we grow. Whatever that number is, it's going to grow. So my question, again, just I look at these numbers and I'm just worried. As we look through the five-year plan, that we're that we're not investing like we do in our roads or infrastructure or parks in this. And um, I'll leave it, I'll leave it go if others feel it's a fine, but when it's flat to down, it makes me nervous.
No, I totally get where you're at and I I don't want to come across as in any way ignoring that concern. Uh, what I view as, I I guess we need to make sure our 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 um. The words we're using are uh, understood and what we mean with each other when we talk about most connected. So if most connected means sending our our, which we, which we know generally that means we want a much higher speed and capacity. To our residents. We're now focused on the next future phase of that is towards the resident side. And I, and I I just want this council and anyone watching to understand that is a priority and remains a priority. I'll stick a ten million dollar number in there if you want me to. Um, it ain't going to work. But our focus right now isn't about showing a big number spend. Our focus right now is understanding the gap and then making sure we're bringing the industry to the table and the dialogue. About how they are going to help fix that. I don't think that this city council throwing money at that is the answer. I'm just gonna. I've watched this for a lot of years and that doesn't make me an expert by any stretch. I don't think the answer is us throwing money at that yet. I think our focus needs to be really working with the industry because remember, we don't have just one provider here. We have multiple providers. We got thirty-two ISPs connected into the, into the, into uh, the local data center. Um, we do have dialogue and discussion with others who may have an interest in this market. Uh, but we also have those who are already in this market who understand what they have and the extent that they have plans themselves. To serve and or to do upgrades. So, you know, I don't want you all to think we've been sitting spinning wheels on this goal. We've. I I can say that that Doug and and with the assistance even of Greg Dunn and others. Uh, you know, have been having these discussions with the industry uh, to try to advance this cause and this thought. We as staff are just not prepared to throw big numbers at that yet, uh, or any number of that until we understand where they are. I I understand too, you would say, well, gee, well, wouldn't you put a placeholder based on other models? Well, we've looked at other models of municipal deployments and they're struggling because they have to go head-to-head competition. And I don't think that's a place we want to be. I think we want to be in a place that's helpful to those other providers and somehow. Uh, work our way into being a partner as opposed to a competitor. And uh, that's, that's the kind of dialogue that we're having right now. And should continue to have um, over the next uh, few months with with these folks. So. I I just want to make sure that that still may not answer your question. I apologize if it doesn't, but. That's, that's where we are relative to any big dollars and trying to advance that goal to that level.
Can can I add on to that Dana as well?
Can I, can I add one thing in Dana? I I think it's probably um, what I would like to communicate is that. When opportunities arise, I think what we want to communicate to staff is that we want to capitalize on those opportunities. And if they're not in the budget, that doesn't mean we don't want to do them. And and you all have been pretty good at coming back to us with any, with any additional spend. Be it property acquisition or whatever my opportunities might arise. I think what we want to communicate, you know, if it's in the budget, that that's. That's good and it makes it a little easier. Um, if it isn't in the budget and an opportunity arises, then basically I I think. We want to communicate is we want to capitalize on opportunities regardless of their position in the budget. In terms of IT and technology and connectivity, but also in terms of other things in term land acquisition and and all of the other things that. That make us succeed in the things that we do.
Yeah, thank, well, thank you for that. And I and I and I know of this council that that you are very open to that. Which I want to make sure I convey and appreciate. And usually, one of the caveats I put at the front of this budget when I presented is. I'm presenting you a five-year budget, but I'm not afraid to come back and ask you for something if I need it. And uh, and I just know that I've I've never been afraid to do that. Um, and you all have always been very supportive, at least in listening to that. Uh, should those kind of opportunities uh, present themselves. And I think that's really what we're out there fishing for right now is. What are those opportunities and are there opportunities to leverage? We just don't know what or if any, there will be any kind of numbers tied to that yet. Doug, you wanted to chime in? I don't know if I.
Yeah, I I I wanted to say really what uh, Mayor Amaro's Grooms was saying essentially, that it's a very good question. And the budget is extremely useful to us to be able to plan, but it is not the only source of truth. With regard to what, how we expect this to play out. And so it does not reflect what is going to happen. Uh, we do think that we can come to council, uh, but there could be wide swings between uh, what we're doing. This is not strictly a technology purchase that I will give you some money and you go buy this thing. It is more of a partnership model of which there may be uh, some expenditures there, but there also may not be. There are other models in which it may not have a large upfront cost and we will have the opportunity to come back to council and say. This actually is not going to be a lot upfront, but over a long period of time, it could be. That's a vast difference from another thing. We are also at risk of sending signals to the market. And so we want to be careful that we don't tell the market as, you know, Dana put a number there. We have ten million dollars because that will be exactly what we will be charged, nine million, nine hundred and ninety-nine thousand dollars. So. Um, we just emphasizing that this budget as you see it does not reflect a concrete plan. It reflects uh, a a strategy that we've been building up from the past that has been working for us to be opportunistic. As the market says, we're ready to go here. We've been able to do that time and again over the last three to four years. So we do expect, we're we're. Like a mad dog after a bone on this goal is our top priority. Uh, and we just don't want you to look at this particular number. And make any assumptions about it.
And and I guess that I want to make sure that that council hears this too. I really do think that that our timing is askew, given our dialogue. In this budget process, you know, um, and what I mean by that is there's ongoing discussions to try to understand and frame up. And there still needs to be some finishing of that in order for us to to come back to council and make you more fully aware. Of how that dialogue is going. Um, and I I would, I would assume, um, not assume, but based on conversations Doug and I have had. I think Doug, we're really looking at maybe even yet this year, uh, being able to try to wrap something up and report back to council on a more. A more detailed status of where we are. Is that correct?
You know, it seems to me the CIP in many ways is kind of trying to look into a crystal ball and trying to predict what it is. That we're going to need. And when it comes to things like roadway and maintenance and all those other things, the past gives us a pretty good indication of the future. We can make a pretty effective. Prediction. When it comes to technology, I would venture to guess that in what's the last year of this CIP, twenty twenty-five? I bet by twenty twenty-five, we will spend a tremendous amount of money on some project that we don't even know exists today. And the ability to adapt to that and respond to it, I think is what everybody is saying. And I think technology is maybe a little bit different than a lot of our other capital.
Well, I I want to assure council that we hear you loud and clear. I know that this is your, a very high priority goal. I don't want you to walk away from this budget process and feel like it's not my priority or that of staff's. Um, and I know sometimes we equate, you know, uh, money to priority. And um, this is one where we're probably running a little bit behind on the money side, but it's a priority on the, on the planning side. So. Uh, and we owe you more information on that and and I just want you all to know, I recognize that. So. I hope that's at least helpful. Okay, I I guess we'll go on then to Riverside Crossing Park. I'll hand it off to Matt Irman. Uh, Matt, you want to update council on on this?
Yeah, good evening. Uh, you'll recall the last council.
Yeah, good evening. Uh you'll recall the last council work session. The funding of projects for Riverside Crossing Parks were uh park was discussed and then particularly regarding the twenty twenty-five funding for the bundle of projects listed on this slide. To better understand the estimated design and construction costs, they are listed here for your reference broken down. The point with this was to determine whether it was uh preferred to move some of the projects earlier in the five five year plan. And perhaps keep the promenade out in later years as we better understand the dynamics and actual use of the park once it's completed to a certain level. And we can come back to this slide um as needed, but this next slide here, uh there was some questions about when is what happening and how do I know that? So or how will we know that and clarify that? So this slide is basically a heat map, if you will, that color codes the various projects. That's the the timing, um those that are currently in progress and those are being proposed. If you refer to the legend up in the upper left hand corner of the map, you can see there that the GMP one is the current construction represented by the number, the blue number one and number two um on the map itself. The GMP two that is uh ready to go for next year, next January, hopefully, is um the lawn space, multi-use path areas and certain levels of the West Bank restoration. You can see that in the light orange areas on the slide and there are some representations of some expected due dates for those. In question for the twenty twenty-five uh projects here include numbers six through uh six through eleven. Um and where and when and how do we want to fund these projects? So um you'll see on the map itself um the east side of the river will be nearly complete next year, uh absent the promenade, for instance. We can move the footpath to the river. Um that could be executed sooner to move that along. On the west side, the finished facade and uh the stone facade on the bridge and the um actual West Plaza itself. A few paths are to be completed in twenty twenty-one along with um most of the restoration there that's at the foot of the bridge itself. So also included on this map, you'll see sidewalk addition to the southern and northern um end of North River View. These are a few connector paths um along with the future parking lot with river access on the northern end of the west side. So these things are in the dark orange are programmed basically for the twenty twenty-five area uh uh year. And the lighter orange is for um next year, twenty twenty-one. So for discussion sake, the next slide breaks down some discussion points and questions that will help the conversation along. Much of this will require Matt Stifler to chime in on some of the funding options and financial components as needed. So um I guess I'll take this over here, Matt, for a little bit and then whatever we need to do to turn back over to you for some questions and so forth, but in order to create a point of reference, uh the proposed CIP fully debt financed the entire project in twenty twenty-five. So the discussion questions we have, should the project be split between the promenade, which is the six point zero two five million dollar project and all of the other projects equating to one point six million dollars? So that's the question number one. Uh should we split the promenade up with these other projects and then to what degree do we split these other projects up? I guess that would be the first question of discussion.
Yeah, I I think what we heard at the last meeting was perhaps the the notion of the promenade itself. Um and that is that si- again, that sidewalk portion up along Riverside Drive uh being delayed, if you will, or put to a la- later part. So then we wanted to make sure we were lifting up these other projects um to make sure that they weren't kind of kind of like throwing the baby out with the bathwater, right? We wanted to wanted to make sure that these other projects on the west side and the one on the east side that you had clarity on what those were. I I will tell you, staff would recommend executing on um those other projects and holding off on the promenade itself. Um in order that you kind of, you know, polish up the west side and do that other east side project. That's that would be staff's recommendation if you were to ask us for one. I'm sorry you didn't ask me. I jumped ahead. I sorry.
Dana, can you back up one slide, please? I I think probably the uh the tie-ins to the North River View Street. Uh that one I probably would hold on a bit um until we know what was gonna happen with North River View Street and that that's the only one I would take exception with other than the balance of the projects. I think probably you could separate those from the promenade, which is certainly the lion's share of the spending. But the those tie into River View Street, that that to me, you know, that there's a lot of unfinished business right there that we may not want to put in stone, as it were, our our plan at this point.
What about uh uh the West Park parking lot? That's that's a I that's number ten. It doesn't have a price tag on it.
And that's actually the three hundred and fifty thousand dollar project.
Okay.
That that could, for me, could be one that doesn't need to happen right now either, as there is certainly ample parking in the district at this point in time. You know, and and we may, depending on how the use goes, we may or may not want to use up a flat piece of green space on that side of the river for a parking lot. We may want to put something else over there.
That was one of the items that we heard quite a bit in the public input sessions several years back relating to access for kayaks and maybe even uh handicap accessibility to the river itself. Um because of the terrain down at that area, it does offer that as a as a possibility. So that's why that that is part of the plan.
But but that doesn't engage the river there.
There would be a footpath down to the river of sorts.
Quick question, since you're talking about um item ten, the the parking lot and the kayaking. Uh what's the timeframe uh in terms of providing or um allowing kayaks to launch from a site and where what where are those specific sites? And has the city um looked at vendors to provide that service?
We have actually four sites, three of which are on Dublin property. One of them's up at the uh the dam on Columbus property. And then the other ones at Amberly Park and the other ones at um Sido Park. And then down below the bridge or underneath the bridge at the Dublin Springs area. And you know, we have been working with um Hero USA as one of the vendors. They are an organization that actually teach physically privileged kids on how to kayak and they've actually run some programs for us through our recreation brochure uh several times. Uh kayaking is one of those things that's getting very, very busy. And I don't know if it's directly related to limitations on what we can do today, or um I do know the younger generation is really taking it to heart. So you know, we haven't spoken to a specific vendor for providing the service mainly because we've got, we have one that is currently doing so. But it doesn't mean we can't explore that option as 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 certainly we can do some additional amenity development down here to help support such an activity.
Dana, I I would add that the the spot just south of the or underneath the one sixty-one bridge is really an excellent launch or really exit is what it primarily is used for for kayaks at that point is a really great one. Um a- and we may want to look at if we're going to spend, you know, a lot of money on a parking lot. You know, we certainly have some parking needs on South High Street. Uh and and maybe we would want to locate that parking right there. Um because it's a the the terrain is very natural for egress to the river at that point. And the roadway is in place where actually they can drive the vehicle nearly down to the river uh to to pull out kayaks. That's what they do at present. They don't need to come all the way up to North River View. There's actually a a road that leads down.
We actually use that today for that that program that we offer.
The only problem with that, Chris, is that there's really uh there's there's a few places to park and there's no parking on on uh South River View at all, really. Uh it's just you wouldn't get as many spaces as you would at the other end, but but maybe a balance of the two. Um I have a question for Dana. You know, obviously, we'd like to see the promenade finished sooner than later, but um but as we go forward um and and trying to figure out how the income is coming in and what kind of damage the pandemic's done to our resources. Knowing that that's something that we'd like to maybe move forward sooner than two thousand twenty-five, what are the options besides just uh cutting out some of the things that we're having? Is that something we can put as a one of those wish list items that we can move forward and uh if money becomes available sooner or ways that we can look at it from without having to cut some of these other things that are so important that uh Matt has listed there?
Yeah, I I I would recommend you take that approach. Uh you you might want to go ahead and program it in an in and out year. Uh you could always show it in twenty twenty-five. You could even show it in the beyond column and then revisit this annually um like we do. And you know, if if things are looking really good, you can always, if that's a priority project among others that you want to pull forward, you can certainly do that. Uh Matt, I don't know, Stifler, if there's anything you want to add to that.
No, I would echo that. Uh once, once it's determined, if if council gives me a a recommendation that twenty twenty-five is fine, but if there's an opportunity to pull it forward, that'll be exactly where I look in future CIPs when I'm programming them. There's an opportunity to pull that forward, then then we'll do so.
Matt, can you go forward a slide, please? I see there uh the South High Street trees are not programmed until twenty twenty-three and the one of the options would be to move it to twenty twenty-four. I thought we were going to be, is that the balance of?
Yeah, we we are moving forward with the one million dollars on, I believe it's the west side. The the remainder, the east side trees, I think are in fine condition. So we put a placeholder in in twenty-three. But it really is a placeholder um and could be moved to twenty-four without impacting our current project and probably not impacting that project. If we saw that it needed replaced earlier, it would it would again be moved forward if necessary, but it it really is a placeholder. So before we start moving real projects that have a real impact, I'm presenting an option that we could move some placeholders that are really there uh to make sure that we know there are some things we want to do.
Great, thank you. Other thoughts from council on that or um? Um I Want to leave it as it is?
Hey, Chris, I agree with you. Chris, I agree with you on the parking thing. I think um, you know, that's something that can slide back uh after a lot of other things. When you think about uh kayaking and canoeing with your kids, you put them in up at the dam and you drive down to Leather Lips and park your other car down there and fish them out there. Uh I don't know, you know, that has to be that much of a priority. I I think um that's a neat thing and it's a wonderful thing and I and I think it's a great idea to have a path down there to the river, but right now, it's, you know, as far as kayaking and canoeing, uh the old way works just fine for me. Thanks.
I I agree with my colleagues on that and I guess staff's recommendation. I it sounds like we should defer the parking for a little while. I had a question, Matt, about um the landscaping. That that landscaping plan that you provided. So would all of that be included in the twenty twenty-one? And based on this discussion, or what would not be included, if anything?
Um all of the landscaping that was included in that would be included in twenty twenty-one.
Except I think there was some promenade tree planting. There was there was something on the promenade. I can't recall exactly what it was. It's shrub hedge or there was something up in there, but I think everything else is covered.
Okay. So the the um the landscape beds that we had talked about, I think last time we brought the full plan and some of the little nooks and crannies and landscaping, all of that is included?
Yes.
Okay, great. Yeah, then then that that was one of my concerns. Um and this would add the bike path or the walking path or the running path along the what westernmost border of the east side of the park, if you will, right? So we'll have completed all the walking and biking paths on that side, correct?
Yes.
Well, that'd be great.
I will add on um area six over on the west side. Uh one of the reasons we have not landscaped that yet is we are we are planning for funding for that rock facade to be put on that wall before we plant. So we would incorporate that in with the rock masonry package. Uh we can pick and choose what we need to put when and where uh and when, you know, it's most appropriate to do so, but we didn't want to go in and disturb what we planned and to put some stone masonry on the walls there.
It's going to be beautiful.
It's coming along.
Matt, on the uh the pictures that that uh were in our packet for the Riverside Crossing on, I think it was the number six on the green, um I think it's listed as number four, the green. It shows this stone wall that people are sitting on. And I think of that as the as the where the promenade would be. Is that stone wall being not being constructed with the green, is it?
No, it's not.
Okay.
That was an early rend- earlier rendering before the site plan was approved. So some of those pictures that you're seeing in those um have been have been modified to meet what was uh requested. So what you'll find in the package before you without the promenade is basically a mounding of the dirt up to that elevation at a slope that is fairly easily terrained and we will readapt that area later if the promenade goes in.
Okay, okay, cuz I didn't realize that the amended version is the, are you saying the amended version and the old version are both in this packet?
Oh, it was a, it was a rendering with that we provided uh as part of the master plan process, I believe, um what you're referring to. The site plan has since been um remade.
Okay, all right, thanks. That's good.
We haven't, we haven't touched it up since the promenade came out, is what I'm saying. Since the promenade was put into the video, we haven't, we haven't updated that. Um but likely something we will need to do to help clarify what what everybody will find once this is completed.
And as Kathy asked, the um the landscaping that all of the landscaping is going to be completed before with with this um years, coming years and the green. Uh as for the plantings, not necessarily the promenade, but all the other plantings down on the on the east side of the, on the west side of the river where they have grass now, that's all gonna get planted?
That is part of that process, yes.
Okay, great.
That will be at the end of twenty twenty-one. Hopefully by fall, so we can get the plants in before winter sets in.
Thanks, Matt. Appreciate all the updates on that.
Can we recap? What you want to keep in and what you don't want to keep in? I think what I heard was the east side promenade. Uh we would still show like in twenty twenty-five, but you would take another look at that if the opportunity arose to pull it forward. Is that correct? The uh west side, West Plaza and Bridgestone veneer and planting seem to be okay, but the West Plaza sidewalk connection down along North River View Street, you would not want to act on that just yet. Did I hear that correctly? Okay, and then the um the parking and uh river access, uh we would not do right now. And we'll probably slide that out to a beyond two thousand fifteen column. You can always revisit that, right, in the future. Um and then the east Boulder path to the river on the east side, we would go ahead and execute on that. Uh cuz that pretty much finishes up the east side absent the promenade, so. Did I, did I hear that correctly? And I hope I'm not misspeaking, but if I am, just, you know.
Dana, one point of clarity on that, the west side, this, what Matt indicated was a secondary was a secondary river access from the parking lot. So we will, we would maintain that river access that's shown on the drawing in that lighter orange color. But this secondary kayak launch access would be the one that gets held, correct?
I'm not sure I'm following you, Chris.
So he had said out of the parking lot here, there was going to be a footpath down to the river for kayak launching and so on and so forth.
Yeah, that would be part of the parking lot construction.
But the other pieces that engage the river that are the lighter orange shade and that number nine would all allow engagement of the river on the west side?
Well, that's, that's part of the funding for this package if you wanted to go in there. There's nowhere to access it though, except from the road.
Well, number nine says West Park Multi-Use Path, $350,000. And I thought that was part of the number that was on this second slide that we were saying we would like to proceed with.
So the West Path connection of $300,000 is where you're referring to at number seven in North River View and that area down through that, the upper tier of their furthest west point. The number nine was part of the package that was going to go with the parking lot to provide vehicles, parking areas to access that path system and to the river. So the number nine you see there with the shared use paths was part of the parking lot project.
The package deal, 350 for all of them?
Correct. The package deal of 350 was to include all of that. So we can pull pieces and parts out of there and we can incorporate a path system through there. But when we say shared use path, it's, it's, in certain areas of that path, it's not going to be able to be a concrete or asphalt just because the flood zone and the nature of where it goes. So some of that will have to be natural materials.
I guess when I look at this drawing, I would hold on six, seven and 10. And I would proceed with nine and five has already been bid and is in process, is my understanding.
Yes.
And eight would be done, correct, down to the water on the east side?
Eight will be done, yes.
Yeah, I concur. That's what makes sense.
It makes sense to me, too. I think you need the pathways. People will find their way to the river and they'll park along River View Street if they need to park.
Agreed.
Okay, I think I've got it.
Okay, I'd just like to ask one question, just because I find this awkward when I, when I walk down through there. So the sidewalk connection that would pick up along River View Street and come up the hill underneath the bridge. You're not interested in adding to that pedestrian access there, is that correct? Because what, what happens is it puts people out in the street, walking down the street to get down there, then to get to the path access if they're walking down to get to that. I just want to make sure we're all clear.
Can you show that on the picture?
Matt, can you, or somebody point, I don't think my pointer would work, point to?
Be able to point, but Matt, it's just, it's that darker orange line under, number seven.
Can you enlarge it?
No, I don't think we can.
Dana, can you put six apart from seven? I guess six to me, it does make sense to have a path that would walk up under the bridge there. But the seven, you know, with not knowing how North River View would lay out, I don't want to put that in the wrong spot. So maybe you do six and not seven. That would get you up under the bridge and up into the plaza there without committing, you know, to the south.
I think one is the masonry work in the, so seven is the path connection that Dana is saying makes sense and you're agreeing, Chris. So six, I think, is more cosmetic or aesthetic. Is that correct, Matt?
Yes.
So I guess the gist of it is we want some sort of path connection that goes from, what's the, the street that's running east and west there? Is that, what, what is it?
North Street. Is that North Street?
North Street. Do you want connection from North Street up under the bridge? And to me, that development, I agree, Chris, we don't really know what that development is going to look like, but something is going to be there. And the path that we're creating, it doesn't look like would be interfered with by any future development in that area. That's just my two cents.
Yeah, I don't, Dana, I mean, look at it and you can decide. I think, you know, the way North Street, the way that intersection happens there with North River View and the alley there, it's.
I'm not arguing for it one way or the other, only that if we put a path system in down there, that's going to attract people. There could be some parking along North River View Street, as was pointed out. But as people will want to walk down from, you know, the bridge or whatever, you're, you're walking in the roadway, that, that's all, so.
Well, let's leave the money as where it is and then maybe Matt can come back with us with a more detailed drawing and we could look at exactly what pieces and parts that we want to do. And that, the sum total of it wasn't a huge number, so likely we could still make that adjustment.
I like that, so we can make sure we're on the same path. I, you know, because some of that stuff that is in the, in the area of seven is restorative work in order to put a walking path through there. Some of that may not be needed, some of it, we can do it differently. We can figure out a, not a temporary way to do it, but something that is not so invasive to the area in case there's a different change to it. So we can come back and detail that a little bit better.
Great, thank you.
Matt Erman, are you clear?
I am clear.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you very much. Good conversation. Okay, then that would take us to another item that we need some guidance on, which is related to water and sewer extensions. I think a combination of Megan, Paul and Matt Stifler on this one. Don't everybody jump at once.
Matt may be getting connected.
Paul or Megan, you want to? I really, what, what's, what's happening here is just sort of the broad overview is, you know, we, I think part of the discussion last time was that we had made you aware that there, first of all, there's a fee study that's before you and we will be coming back in October with a recommendation for a 3% increase, rate increase. These projects are more specific to the standing policy to extend water and sewer, which is not funded out of the rate base, but is funded out of subsidy from the general fund as part of that policy. So that still will stand even with the rate increase proposal. So I want to make sure we're clarifying that. In the years 19 and 20, there were these projects that were being proposed. I think part of the discussion that has really come to affect the extension policy as we know it now, based on some experience that we gained, is threefold. One, the extent to which residents really are not agreeing to connect in. Once it's extended, which we knew as part of the policy would be part, would be, you know, part of it, there would be times when people would not connect in because they still have their HSTS, their onsite system or their well would still be functioning, but then it would be there for them to connect into if they had a malfunction or had to reinvest in that. What we're finding is people aren't really signing up for these new services. The second thing is, as we shared with you, City of Columbus has told us that even though we would like to extend water lines, main water lines, even, and even though they're looped, meaning water would push through, we, they do not want them left laying dormant. And that's creating problems for us to be able to extend in the timeframes that we were originally proposing. And there's more technical reasons for that that Paul can explain. But the bottom line is unless people are hooking in and we know they're going to hook in in a reasonable number where the water line would go in, absent that, we don't want to extend the water line for safety reasons. Then the sanitary sewer, where some of these are going in, particularly along Riverside Drive going north, they require pump stations. And you'll notice these are, these would be built in sequence as well. The problem there is if those pump stations lay dry and aren't pumping, then we have an issue with the equipment being put in too early. So there's issues with that. So having said that, then, those three things are significantly impacting us and our ability to, to advance the project. So we do have a recommendation here that essentially says in year 21 and 22, we would go ahead and extend to a couple of certain areas that we know are going to be affected by the AEP project that's coming up. And then you can see there that area 1B and 1C. And then, which we can explain what that is. And then this 22, area 15, those are ones that we would go ahead and recommend that we go ahead and advance. But then what we would recommend showing for years 23, 24 and 25 and those associated projects would be to put in the design dollars for those and make sure that we're continuing to do, at least do the design portion of this. Because, you know, what would happen is if something were to significantly fail or a series of systems fail, then the public could turn to us and say, gee, we really need to have these extended now. And we could posture ourselves to at least be prepared for that, should that happen. So that would be money actually well spent with that reason. And the other reason, it would help us to better understand the actual cost. So that's a really broad overview. I'll let Megan and Matt, it sounded like someone was having some technical issue. Maybe that's cleared up and they can chime in. Anything you guys want to add to that?
No, Dana, it's Paul and I was just going to go through the, you know, and yeah, it was a great overview and kind of walk you through the previous 15-year plan and what we've got completed to date on this first slide, which is actually area 14A. And I don't expect you to remember where all these are, so I'll just kind of give you a general location. This is actually on, along the east side of Avery Road, south of St. Bridgetts. It was a new build home at that location that we worked with that builder to extend sanitary sewer to that area. 11A and 11B was constructed in 2018. That's over at the Bel Air Avenue, Limerick Lane area. That actually provides service to 30 parcels. After that service was available at the end of 18, we had three connections in 19. We had three more connections in, that occurred afterwards. So we're up to, to date, six total connections out of 30 parcels and a possible seventh. So that kind of gives you a little bit of idea of our absorption. You know, after two years of a completed project, how many connections we've gotten. And then lastly, 4B and 4C, which is over at the Bright Road, Grandy Cliffs, Janmar Court area. Obviously, that project's been under construction this year and soon it could be going to become available to those residents. The first one, 11A, 11B was, those first two are both sanitary projects. 4B and 4C were both water and sanitary sewer. And then we'll go back real quick and then in process, what we're working on presently and as Dana alluded to, we've got designed 4A, which is phase two of 4A, which is along Riverside Drive. That's on the west side, River Knolls Orchard Crest area. That's where we had a public involvement meeting. That's both water and sanitary sewer. And although the residents were glad to have the service available, there was very little interest in connecting immediately after the project would be completed. We probably had just one resident over there that was, you know, interested in making an immediate connection. That also proved to be true down on Dublin Road South, which is area 10C and 10D, which is a sanitary sewer project. And same situation, when we met with the residents, had a public information and involvement meeting, glad to have the service, not really interested in providing or having immediate connections. They were happy with their onsite systems. They were functioning properly. So again, very little interest. And again, as Dana indicated, where we have these mechanical systems with pump stations in particular, you know, have them put in the ground, they're all submersible stations below ground to have them sit there with no flow for many years. I can assure you that when we go back and do have a connection to mechanicals, we'll probably have to either be replaced or see if we can get work done on those. Similarly, with the water service, as Dana mentioned about having looped systems where the water main basically connects and then ties back into the existing system. You know, if we have one that doesn't, City of Columbus, for water quality purposes, does not want to have that dead end main. And then lastly, even if we do have a looped water line, we found this out through the 4B and 4C project during design, that we need to have service connection commitments to the water system from residents so that we don't have water services sitting there with water in them for years and not having a connection. Same situation, we have a quality concern with that water and that came from the City of Columbus. So in that particular instance, we got commitments from folks in that area that they would connect to the water system. And as a result, we could extend those services over to their property line. Absent that, we end up with a main with no service connections. And that's a pretty large expense for the resident to make that service connection over to the main. It's just an added cost to their service line if and when they do decide to connect. 4A in 2019, phase one, that's along the east side of Riverside Drive. We're doing that as part of the Riverside Drive East Shared Use Path. That's where we married it up with that project, that section one of that path. So that'll be done collectively, since we're going to, we were going to disturb that area anyhow with the path, it just made sense to do that project at the same time and extend that water. And then lastly, area 1B and 1C, which is on the north side of Summit View, west of Sawmill Road, Glencrey Place and Trails End Drive. That's as a result of the work the AP is doing and at risk to three properties in particular in Glencrey Place, should their systems be impacted by AP's work. So we advanced that design, so we'd be in a position to be able to go to construction if necessary. So with that, go ahead, Matt.
Sorry, so following Paul's recap, then the further construction of these extensions was placed on hold pending that rate study. There we go. As, as you've heard, the recommendations for the rate study recommended 3% inflationary basically increases to water and sewer rates for the next five years. This rate study did not take into account any extensions. So the extensions were, were not part of this rate study, which is, which is, means that current expenditures were well matched against current revenue. So as we take on these potential water and sewer expenses, the added design and construction costs will have to be funded through one of three potential revenue sources. One would be hopefully an increase in new users, new connections. But as we've heard, that has proven to be somewhat difficult. Another possible option is rate increases greater than the inflationary recommendations of the rate study. And then the policy actually specifies transfers from the general and capital improvement funds. The current CIP proposes $200,000 in annual transfers from the capital improvement fund for sewer-related extensions. These are the prior and current extensions that Paul mentioned earlier. If we were to, go ahead.
I just wanted to ask you a question about the fees, the tap fees. When, when the extensions are in place and the, and the owners of the parcels can tap in, is there a discount for, for connecting immediately? Do you get?
There is. There's a, for a two-year period after it becomes available for their connection, there's a 50% discount on Dublin's connection fees, not on City of Columbus's, but on Dublin's portion of the connection fee.
Is it, is it possible that if you, do you think the reason they're not connecting is because of cost to connect? Or they're worried about the quality of the water? They think what they have coming out of their well is better than what they'll get? What do you think the reason is that they don't want to connect?
I believe, I believe, go ahead, John.
Hey, Jane, after sitting through a jillion of these meetings when we put this all together, we were shocked. We thought there was a group that wanted new sewer. Then it was a group that was happy. Then it was a group that was happy with their systems. And in the end, we were a little surprised to see, as we now know, that they didn't hook up. And I don't know, I don't think it was the expense. They were sort of happy with the world they had. And yes, the expenses, you know, were in consideration, but we were sort of surprised and we had. So many people appear and testify in front of us. And basically say, no, we really didn't want to hook up. We knew it was the right way to, the right thing to do. For the long term. To protect the citizens, but you know, they had that right and that, that particular agreements. Were meshed into giving, giving them the flexibility. Instead of forcing them to hook up. Which, you know, had they all hooked up. The, the fund would have been, the cost would have been better borne. But in the end, there were so many people that came up and said, no, we're happy with what we got. We don't really want to hook into your system. So. That's why the, the law ended up being the way it was where they had the. Option of not being part of it. So. And that's where.
And I think at the end of the day, you won't see largely people connect until their current system fails.
Exactly, exactly.
And, and probably to think that their system would fail within two years of us completing it is optimistic. And I think the carrot at the end of that string was that you'd get a 50% reduction on the Dublin portion of the tap fee. Which is a smaller, which is the smaller of the two portions. Columbus's portion is larger than Dublin's. But, you know, they, they will come in. It's, it's not, I don't believe it's a question of if, I believe it's a question of when and it's going to be when their current system fails.
I would agree. I think that's been echoed in, in much of what we've heard anecdotally talking to neighbors who ask about it. They don't have any intention of hooking up until their system fails.
I guess maybe to expedite some of this conversation, Matt, I, I know I was the sweet. Feel wanting to get some of these numbers in the budget. And I suppose if, if we could compromise on a place that we would continue to do all of the design work so that if. Execution was necessary, we were ready to execute. I, I suppose at the end of the day, if we. To allocate dollars, the capital budget or the design portion of these systems. That we would be fairly nimble with the execution of such in, in the event that we had. No widespread failures, which in my opinion, I believe is likely. In the next five to 10 years.
Mayor, that's exactly kind of how we've, we've landed on this is, is exactly your, your solution proposed there. We're, we're recommending. That with regard to the extension policies, we execute on the 21 and 22 project. And then program the design fees for the remainder of the CIP. That would keep us on a schedule to finish at the 2032. We're also recommending the, the extent of the financial impact on what we're proposing to the general fund in the next five years. Is an increase in general fund transfers from the proposed of 150,000 in the first year. Scaling up to 261,000 in the fifth year. So it's a fairly modest impact to program those design fees as opposed to the construction fees. We're also proposing that we, we take another discussion regarding this policy with the Public Services Committee. Or a committee of council choosing to talk about the project timelines, completion. Project funding, lack of resident interest and some of the difficulty with extensions. So. We're proposing that the design be funded in the CIP and that we, we reexamine this policy and, and talk about it a little bit more.
Can I ask a quick question, Paul?
Yes, sir.
With regard to the pump stations along Riverside Drive, is there a pump station? One, is a, is a pump station required for every single home? One, two, couldn't the pump station be put in when that home hooked up? And three. Were we going to pay for the pump station or was the homeowner going to pay for the pump station as part of their hookup?
Using the Orchard Crest River Knowles area as an example, we were going to put in one pump station. That a gravity sewer would have drained into, the residents would hook into that gravity sewer. Now, some of those houses might have, be low enough that they wanted basement service. They might have to have a grinder pump of their own. To provide, you know, basement service to their home. We were, again, putting in a common pump station. The idea was, is that we would maintain, we would pay for that as part of the extension and the capital installation. And we would maintain that pump station. Forever thereafter as part of our infrastructure itself. Thank you. You're welcome.
Just a general question, trying to, trying to tie all this together and understand. What we're talking about tonight versus what was proposed in the, the weight binders that we got a couple of weeks ago. There were a lot of zeros in those binders. But it sounds like what you're proposing now is that we allocate some funds for sanitary sewer and water. For at least the design portion of those projects. Is that basically right?
Yes, that's, that's correct.
Thank you.
I think, Matt, were we showing the, those initial projects in 21, 22?
No, we were not. Those, the, the project timing between the CIP proposal and the kind of emergence of that project. We did not show the 21 project in the proposed CIP. But we would recommend moving forward with the construction of it. In the. In the CIP.
And some of that issue, particularly on, on that project and one B, one C. Has been evolving the last couple, three months as AEP has been looking at their. Line replacement there. And we do believe there's going to be impacts as a result. On a few of the HSTSs there as it states, and this would position us to be able to respond to that.
Yeah. So I think our thought with that was is we would monitor that project and be in a position to go to construction if need be. Once again, if we didn't have the interest, you know, we went proposed construction, but we showed it next year. With that possibility, you know, if it happened that those systems were impacted. And those residents, they don't have any option for onsite replacement. We worked with Franklin County Public Health. But, you know, I, I believe that most likely, you know, we would head towards construction is what our plan would be.
Paul, would, would AEP share in the expense of those residents to tap in? Given the work that's done in the area?
Not in the public project. You know, they're negotiating with the property owners right now and I, I'm believing that's part of the negotiations are those connection fees. For those three property owners. We don't know the details of those negotiations, but. Is, I would guess that would be part of what they would try, the property owners themselves would be trying to get compensated for.
I would imagine that would be a good signal for us if we needed to install, if they were going to be in receipt of, if that was part of their agreement. You know, I don't think anybody wants to have septic on their property. It's something that you do. You have to. It's really not a want to. So.
Right.
If they're making those deals with AEP, they're going to look high into a sewer.
Yeah. And, and all indications are, you're correct. For three property owners in particular, there was definite interest in, in the service. No question.
Well, thanks for indulging me. I, I appreciate it. I, I can, I can live with this. I don't know about my fellow council members, but at least having the. Nimble capability to execute on something should the need arise that I can live with that.
I agree, Chris. I think it's important. And if the design is what we move forward with so that it's there when we're ready for it. It makes us be able to move very quickly when we need to. So I'd be very good with this.
You know, at the end of the day, the policy would is, was designed, because if there is a failure, it could only, not only be a health problem for that particular resident. It could be a health problem for their neighbors and who knows who else they get impact. And at the beginning of this whole project and this policy, it was to be able, to be able to respond to those kinds of situations. I think if it takes us, you know, a few, a dozen, two dozen more years than we had expected. I think that the goal, the policy is still a good one. And I think the plan of being, or the, the plan to be ready to move if something happens short-term is a good idea. At the end of the day. The idea was 20 years from now for everybody in Dublin to be hooked into water and sewer. And I think that's still going to happen. It just isn't happening in maybe at the clip that we had expected.
I agree with you, Greg. That's, that's perfect. Thank you.
I agree as well. I think design's a good idea. That way you'll be ready and they'll know that you're, you continue to move forward in the policy of getting everyone connected at some point.
Agreed.
I agree.
Okay. Well, thank you for that. The other thing I would mention too, is that we don't talk about it very much, I don't think, is that. In setting this policy up, we really engage pretty closely with Franklin County Public Health and. Franklin County Soil and Water. On closely monitoring the conditions of HSTSs. So. I think we get some early end wells and the quality of well. So we, we get some early indicators that way too. And I think this policy has helped to advance staying on top of that more than maybe we were in years past as, as a city. Because that was always viewed as, you know, just an individual responsibility, but we're able to monitor those pretty closely. So. We'll keep that effort up as well.
And you know what Dana, when, when they did all that, I bet you there is not another community that they deal with that has tried to respond. More than we have to be prepared to deal with these issues. And, and it just goes to. The, the recommendations that the staff came up with and even coming up with this policy is extraordinary. That the city is extending all of these sewer services and water services. And responding to the concerns. I, I think we just sort of stay the course and may just take us a little longer.
Okay. Well, we appreciate the direction on that. I think, I think that's very clear. And with that, we'll go on to our, we have another topic, which is Emerald Campus. And then after that, I'd just like to open ended if there are other. Issues that perhaps we did not cover that you needed more information on. I know that we did, as I mentioned earlier. Respond to some of those other issues that were brought up. Are your previous meeting and I think we, we got answers to you on that. So. I think Megan, are you going to lead this conversation?
Yes, I will. Good evening. As council is aware, in partnership with the Dublin City Schools, we had retained an engineering consultant to perform a traffic operations study. To evaluate the conditions for pedestrians and drivers traveling to and from the Emerald Campus. Staff had previously provided a copy of the consultant's study report along with a memo briefing of the study dated August 20th. And following a presentation by the consultant during a meeting between. City staff as well as school staff. Council member, member Peterson had did, did a great job. Walking council through much of the background of the development of the Emerald Campus as well as the study alternatives and the recommendations. So I hadn't planned on getting into too much detail this evening. But back in 2017, when the Emerald Campus was being planned, there was a zoning process and a traffic access study had been performed. And based on the planned operations at that time for the school, the results of that study indicated that the development wouldn't negatively impact traffic operations in the area. Since that time, the operations of the Emerald Campus have evolved quite a bit. And there's more class changes than had been planned and more students driving independently to and from the campus. And as a result, there are far more vehicles queuing in the parking lot during the day as students exit the campus in between class periods. So that's the school's primary concern with how this intersection is currently operating. The engineering consultant evaluated several alternatives as listed on the slide and made a couple of recommendations. They recommended the pedestrian hybrid beacon. Option as a viable solution with the least impact on traveling public. And also in the event the schools build a drive from Kaufman High School, connecting the Emerald Parkway at the existing Emerald Campus driveway. At that point, then a roundabout would be recommended as the consultant's preferred alternative. The discussion between the schools and the cities still ongoing. There's still a lot that needs to be discussed to determine the most appropriate improvement at that location as well as the timing of implementation. Not knowing what the outcome of those discussions would be, we did go ahead and for budgeting purposes only. We're showing the roundabout, which is the most costly improvement as a point of reference for council in the proposed CIP. So with that, we would appreciate council's thought at this point in the process regarding how to proceed with this project. And that's all I have. Thank you.
Thanks, Megan. Comments from council? We've seen a lot of data. Andy, if you could unmute yourself, that would be.
Sorry about that. The beacon, the pedestrian beacon is the plan to go ahead and. Install that. And, and I assume if the answer is yes, sooner rather than later with the, the design and. Construction for the roundabout coming down the line.
Point, we're still discussing and contemplating all of the alternatives with the schools. That would be an option, could be to go ahead and install the pedestrian hybrid beacon. We've received very feedback. During the meeting that we had with the schools thus far. There are some pros and cons to that signal. The other thing is it, it's kind of dependent upon the timing. If the schools do proceed with building the parking lot, the access out to Emerald Parkway. You know, at one point I had heard mention that they could build that as soon as next year. If they do proceed with building that and adding that access point directly across from the Emerald Campus Drive, then that would prompt the need for the roundabout over the pedestrian hybrid beacon. So as I mentioned, there's still a lot to discuss that. And you know, there's some schools plans that would play into which. Alternative is selected as well as the timing of the implementation.
My only concern is student safety. It seems like a pretty precarious area to navigate. Quite dangerous. And I, I would hate to wait three or four years until. A completed solution is, is up to speed.
Here's the thing about the beacon. So I'll, I'll describe Megan and correct me if I'm wrong. But the way that this beacon would work, it isn't just, it isn't like our signalized crosswalk down in historic. Dublin where when pedestrians come. The traffic stops and the people cross the street. That's not what it is. The idea is, the reason why it is tied. The whole issue here comes down to turning left out of Emerald Campus. That, that's what causes cars to back up. What the beacon would be is if you're sitting waiting to turn left onto Kaufman. To go up to the Kaufman Emerald Parkway intersection. If you're waiting to turn left, just to the right of you, there would be a crosswalk. With the signalization when pedestrians, I guess going either way, but I think of them of coming, if you've ever seen it happen after. Class lets out, it's a, it's a herd of kids come from Kaufman down to Emerald Parkway. They would cross there. When the herd is crossing the street. Stopping literally a barrier to cars continuing from sort of Cardinal towards. The Kaufman Road, the cars would then hurry up and turn left. So the kids would be walking across the street. To the right of you, you would be turning left. So the only way. The, this, this signalization thing. Impacts the turning left is a byproduct. Of bringing the herd of kids from the corner up at Kaufman Road. You would bring them down and have them cross just to the east. Of the exit driveway where the cars are sitting, waiting to turn left. So what happens is the herd shows up. The cars on Emerald stop. And the cars who are all backed up waiting to turn left would presumably hurry up and get out and turn left. And it just seems to me, I agree with you, Andy. I don't know where you are. He changed over here. I agree with you that the safety of the kids crossing the street is everybody's number one concern. I find, and I'm no. I am no traffic engineer. I don't have any idea. I don't want to be a traffic engineer. I don't know anything about traffic engineering. It just seems to me what you're doing is you're taking the herd of students. From crossing up at Kaufman. Putting it, crossing them closer to the point of conflict. Where there's cars turning to turn left. And you're now having cars turning left while kids, the herd is crossing right there next to them. The whole design to me doesn't seem like a great solution. And like I said, I'm not a traffic engineer. I can't propose what the right solution is. But that, when they described it and we were on the phone with the engineer and. He was describing it and I'm thinking, wow, so we're really moving the crosswalk. And running interference with the herd of kids. So that we can solve the problem we're trying to solve, which is the left turning of traffic. Am I wrong about that, Megan? Do I not understand this?
No, that's correct. The idea is that when activated by pedestrian. No, that's correct. The idea is that when activated by pedestrians, it would also prompt gaps in the traffic traveling on Emerald Campus, which those gaps would then allow for vehicles exiting the Emerald Campus to turn left. So you described that exactly on point. The other option that we would have is we could program the signal so that it would detect queues into the Emerald Campus parking lot. And then the signal could be triggered to activate on Emerald Campus. That's one option, one additional option that we would have with that alternative. The other thing I'd like to mention is, you know, when school was last in session, we had partnered with the schools and we were utilizing officers on site to help during the peak hours. We had worked with the schools to identify when those peaks occur, which days and between which classes. We were utilizing officers on site to assist with traffic control, and that was working rather well, I believe. And that could continue, and I believe the schools plan on having that to continue onsite until such time as the ultimate solution is decided.
The only thing I would add to Greg's summary, which was fantastic, is that you'll also have some people that will be turning right. So the herd stopping everyone that is going to turn left, you're also going to have teenage drivers that are now wanting to turn right and have to cross the herd that is in fact crossing Emerald Parkway. So to Greg's point about the difficulty of relocating the pedestrian crossway crosswalk from Kaufman and Emerald to just at Emerald, you're also going to be asking a new driver to look out for pedestrians headed both directions prior to turning right on the Emerald Parkway out of Emerald Campus.
And that's exactly right, Chris. And and it seems to me, traffic patterns and you traffic engineers would know, again, better than I. Traffic patterns are ones of habit, and we are, we would be putting in a new, I mean, these lights and this configuration is nothing like any of us have ever seen before. There's like two red lights on top of each other, and and it's just like, it's nothing I've ever seen before. And when you take the herd crossing the street and you put a new kind of signalization idea that's going to take people a while to figure out. I don't know, just logic in in me wonders, is is there any way that we could, if you put, you know, you know, you have that sensor that's in the road. If it sensed when there were three or four cars backed up and then it gave a turn, I mean, isn't there another way to do this other than? It just seems to me that just common sense would tell me that there there would have to be something else that could be done. And I'm not saying that I know what that something is. I'm just wondering if, and I think in the interim, from the safety standpoint, like Andy mentioned, I'm assuming general, we we throw a cop out there to help them get out of there. I mean, we don't, if it just comes down to paying for the officer, at least short term, that's better. I think a lot of this and Dana, correct me if you disagree, I think maybe some of these issues haven't really been completely settled or flushed out with the schools. I think they probably still have some discussions about whether they're really going to put in two parking lots right there and another entry into Kaufman. Do they want to do a roundabout even if they don't do those things? You know, it, I think there maybe is still some issues to be addressed. But like Andy points out, in the interim, we got a herd of kids walking across the street with cars that are backed up. So you know, maybe short term, we can commit that officer to getting the cars out of there safely. While the rest is sort of this dust settles, it just seems to me this is just not a solution, the the right solution has not yet really bubbled to the surface.
Seems like officers makes the most sense in the short term. I I believe these kids are actually jaywalking. I I haven't witnessed it, but I've heard that the herd, as you're calling it, they sort of run across Emerald in spots where they're really not supposed to. So to your point, if you if you create a traffic signal for vehicular traffic, that's one thing, but we don't necessarily want to incentivize pedestrians to be crossing at that same spot. We want to incentivize to for them to cross at Emerald and Kaufman. Because that's a safer place for them to cross. Having a police officer there helps kind of keep everybody honest, I guess.
Had the opportunity to watch, I don't know, I sent the link out to folks to watch the video of the school board meeting that was occurring at the same time we were having our meeting last week. And I think as Greg mentioned, there, for some of the school board members, this was the first or one of the first times that they had had ability to look at some of this and consider some of this. And so I know at the end of that, they had requests out to Dr. Holdley to to, you know, work with Dana, work with the landowners and see, as we had talked about before, some other options about access access roads behind and a variety of other things. So they also did mention in that video that they have the police officer and planning to continue to that and felt good about that. So I I just, according to that last video, it sounds like that that process is in place. So immediately and Dana's nodding, so I think that that's covered. So the the question that I would have, is it premature to put this in the CIP at this point if we don't know what we're doing? I mean, we just had the conversation, the IT conversation, that we don't put it in the budget till we know what it is, but here we're putting something in the budget that we don't know what it is. And so I'm, is, are we just a year too early here? Or, I mean, what is, do we wait because they're early on in that conversation? Or what is the right approach since we're again, I think we're out of cycle here a little bit.
Well, at the time we put it in, it felt pretty imminent. This is what the schools were going to be asking for based on all the signals we were getting.
Okay.
Why we put it in where we did is at least as a placeholder. I think some of the signals we got initially were that they would have preferred it moved up. But I think it was good to have the dialogue that that we did have with them and with with your council rep present and their board members present, and to see the conversation have happened at the school board subsequent to that was very helpful. And I I would agree that having an officer on site, and those are additional duty or type situations that we could apply to by time. It would not be the first time the city has done that. I could give you a number of situations where we we've applied that option as we've tried to work through other alternatives over the years, so. That that is certainly a pretty good one. Not that that has to be the ultimate long-term one, of course. So I, you know, I don't advocate one way or the other, whether you keep the money in there or not. As I had mentioned to you all, I think previously Matt and I had put it in there based on the signals we thought we were hearing from the schools and where we thought we were, and we picked the higher number just for planning purposes, because that felt a little bit more tangible and under, because we had had a study done on that. So that's obviously your call and what you want to do with that. You can always keep it there as a placeholder, you could bump it back, you can move it forward. Probably, I think what I would recommend is you kind of keep it on your radar screen, knowing that you've got a partner and someone who may well be asking for it from you as a just in case, so.
For what it's worth, I totally support that approach, Dana. I think leaving it in there is a show of good faith. It's a it's a partnership thing. It's we feel, we know, we recognize we have obligation to help our cars and our kids interact with each other safely. Chief, do you know, like, how many, how many times does that herd quote back and forth? And do they let you know? Like, sort of on a, and I know things are really strange. My kid went over there today for the first time, he set foot in Kaufman. So things are really kind of difficult to predict. But how often would it require an officer to stand there to help cars get out, turning to the left?
Yeah, in the past, when we've worked it, I think as class lets out, the officer is out there working and helping mitigate the foot traffic that's crossing at the intersection and stopping vehicles. I don't know that it's a regular work that they've had. As a matter of fact, we typically schedule for a three-hour period for the officer to be there. We've tried to navigate because the requirement is is that if they're hiring an officer, they're going to be there for three hours. But school obviously lasts much longer than that three-hour period. So finding an officer who can work there as a special duty assignment. But then also that the school is paying for that three hours, that they're also getting a resource that they're utilizing for that full three hours. So we've navigated also the officer doing some additional patrol and and work around the building. You know, as a safety component for Emerald Campus as well, and just coordinating with the school administration on what their needs are. The exact number of times that the officer is out working the intersection, I don't know. My guess is that it's fairly regular with the classes that they come and go, but classes come and go from that building. Our second oldest spent the last two years at Emerald Campus as well. So coming and going from that building is a little more irregular than maybe some of the other schedules at the other, at the other schools. But whatever we need to do to help assist in the intermediate until there is a long-term solution, we're certainly willing to to continue to help the schools and just make sure everybody remains safe in that area.
Is there an SRO at Emerald Campus, Chief?
There is not an SRO at Emerald Campus. So we we do cover some occasional presence there at Emerald Campus with our other SROs, both from Kaufman and then the middle school SRO, but there isn't anybody who is there permanently assigned to to that school.
Can I ask a question of traffic? It seems, it seems like an intersection would would be reasonable there, and maybe it's too close to the Kaufman Emerald. Any possibility of moving the the light from the present intersection farther to the east to the Emerald Campus drive? Or is it too close?
I think, I think, and Dana would know better than I, Cardinal would probably not be happy with that, because Cardinal comes out that light as well.
Why couldn't you put, why couldn't you move the intersection of the light in front of Cardinal farther to the east and one in front of Emerald? Why couldn't you have, why couldn't you spread the the light out? Instead of where it's at now, which is not helping anybody, move one down to Cardinal at the at their main campus drive and put the other one at Emerald. Wouldn't that be cheaper than a roundabout?
I would, well, yeah, lights would be a lot cheaper. It doesn't meet warrant is the problem. I I would suggest Cardinal would be less than, less than happy about relocating that one.
Does meet warrants, because we did take a look at the other signalized intersections in the area and all of the lights in the vicinity of this intersection currently meet the warrants. So we would want to keep signals at those locations.
Okay, so, but I'm confused about that, Megan, because Cardinal shares that light from the east to the west, right? So there's a Cardinal building, and then this, I don't know what you call this, the building next to Emerald. They share that. Why couldn't they share it to the east? Why would they, why do they have to share it there? Because it's not three buildings being shared now, it's only two.
Well, the whole point is the neighbor next to them does not want traffic traversing their site.
I understand, but don't they?
There is no other exit, Jane, towards the other Cardinal building. That's the only exit. Is with the, I I caught XPO because that's one of the towns. That's the only exit for that.
That's the only exit. So main Cardinal building does not share with this inner, with this light. Okay, that's.
Correct. And because I I had thought the same thing, Jane, the the concern is not, at least they didn't express it in what I saw, they did not say that it was too close to Kaufman or too close to the other intersection. It wasn't they were too close, it's just it didn't meet what Dana and Megan are calling the warrants, that the warrants didn't justify it. Just because what you're really doing is just trying to affect the left turn out of that parking lot. So it wasn't supported by that with those traffic warrants. It wasn't because of a distance thing.
Warrants are primarily based on volumes, time of day, number of crashes, things like that. Yeah, that Cardinal wouldn't have access easement across that property, and I can't imagine that they're, they would be able to gain that at this point. I believe Paul's sharing the screen trying to show.
Right, I I thought that it was, it was a shared use. Now, Megan, did you say earlier that there could not be a light at the Emerald? In in place of a roundabout, it doesn't warrant a light. Is that what you're saying?
That is correct. That was the first step that we tasked the engineering consultant studying was whether there would be sufficient warrants to justify a light there, and there just aren't.
Are we very far off from the number? Because as Emerald Campus, real far off?
Yep.
Yeah, I'm just.
That's what actually prompted us to look at the adjacent signals was to see how those compare, to see how far off we are and what, if there's anything that we could do to, you know, help meet the warrants, and there just wasn't. So there's, there's no chance of it meeting warrants at this location.
When you say, I'm just curious how far off we are percentage-wise. Fifty percent then of warrant or, you know?
I don't have the numbers in front of me. Paul, do you have the data?
I don't have the data, but I, it's less than fifty percent. And it's a side street volume that we don't have is the problem. The the exiting traffic from the campus itself compared to the volume on Emerald Parkway, I believe, was the driving.
The other thing was as soon as we learned, because at the beginning of this study, we were not aware that the schools were potentially looking at building a parking lot across the street and adding an access. So as soon as we learned of that, we even took a step back and reran the warrant analysis. And even if we were to anticipate that parking lot being built and that additional access coming from Kauf Kaufman, it still doesn't meet the warrants.
Right. Right, okay. Yeah, I was just seeing if there was any way that you could get a light, because it would, you know, even though the roundabout will solve the problem, roundabouts are not pedestrian friendly. They're just not. And you're going to get those kids running across the street anyway. And so if there is any way that you could get an intersection, I mean, if you could get a light, it would be so much safer. It would stop the traffic. It would help the pedestrian use. I just wonder as the campus grows in size, and if they do put parking on the Kaufman site, whether or not you'll eventually get to that number. Yeah, I I'd for, I think you have to have support of the school board to know what's going on before you spend that kind of money on a roundabout at this point.
Well, I think the question before us here this evening is where do we want to put it in the CIP? So, you know, I I am fine with the out years to give us some time to find a solution if we want to twenty-four, twenty-five, you know, Dana, I think you probably know best what the, what the right year is going to be. We have to keep something, I think, because we're going to have to do something. And and put it in those out years and continue to work with the schools and make progress.
You know, the two reasons we put it where we did was number one, how did it feasibly work within our own means, given the other priorities that we've all been talking about? And then secondly, how can we manage expectation around how realistic is it to put and how quickly we can put a roundabout in? Now, you know, we've had a history of doing those fairly quickly. However, some of the challenges, as you have with any of these sites, are designed, and then when you get into utility work and that sort of thing, which I think I shared at the last meeting, you know, we just really don't have visibility on that yet. And I don't know, you know, it's not something I don't think we would quite recommend even programming design dollars too soon. You know, until we have a better idea of how this might land with the schools. So I I don't know that it's in a bad place necessarily. I think if you did bump it out a little bit, I mean, it's fine to show it within the five-year, you want to put it in the fifth year. But again, like the conversations we had before this evening and previously, is you could always choose to move something up if you if you need to. So again, you know, we put it in as a placeholder for this very discussion and and hope we might be further along in some of this discussion or understanding. But I actually do appreciate the schools willing to stand back and take a little bit of a look at this, and we can plug this safety issue a bit with the assistance of our police officers. So I think it's a good solution. So I, that's kind of a not, sorry, that's kind of a non-answer in it. But I I think we put it where we did. I think it's fine, but if you want to push it back, you can, knowing that you can move it back up if you want to revisit it.
What year is it in right now, Dana?
I believe it's twenty-three, is it not, Matt?
It's twenty-four.
Design is in twenty-three, construction's in twenty-four. Making constructions twenty-three. I don't think you can push it back much, much further.
I I think the goodwill gesture is to leave it right there until maybe we get additional information.
I agree.
And my only, I I agree, my only comment might be that we wouldn't label it necessarily a roundabout, just say roadway improvement so that there's not a confusion or concern about what it is, saying, you know, whatever the right answer is, we're here to, you know, help support that. But don't put that in there, because I think that will continue to create conversation until at which time the appropriate conversations occur, so.
That's a great point. I think it's only fair, too, to everybody involved that maybe the solution isn't determined yet. So that's a great point.
I I agree with that, Kathy. I think that is a great suggestion. And for me, the these two additional part and an exit road coming out of, another exit road coming out of Kaufman into this exact same volatile situation. If that's actually what they're going to do, would sort of change the picture for me, you know? And I don't, I'm not entirely certain how definitive that is. Like, if we don't do anything, are they going to still put in two parking lots and an exit out of there right there? I I don't know. And so, but I think. But I think Kathy, you make a very good point.
I agree.
Okay, well, let's leave it where it is.
Solution becomes obvious. I think we're on the right track here. Let's sit back and wait to see what the solution, how it all unfolds. Thanks.
I agree.
Okay, so we'll leave that where it is. What else? Were there other issues, Dana, that you had to bring to our attention?
Those were the key ones that we felt we really need to have dialogue about tonight. Obviously, we're open to discuss whatever might still be on your mind or if there's something we didn't tee up tonight. I apologize for that, but I think we responded to all the things that were raised in the document that we provided last week, but happy to try to respond to any other questions you might have.
Great, thank you. Are there other issues from council that they would like to discuss relative to CIP?
Just.
Oh, I'm sorry. Go ahead, Jane.
No, I just, Dana, we talked a little bit about the Darby Park, the Darby Lot, and I noticed that the electric's on the light poles and that we can get water from the fire hydrant. And I know this isn't a great expense, but when we were in Marysville and saw the great pavilion and a gathering space, the possibility of maybe looking at the next, within the next five years of using that spot as a possible gathering space for the west side in the historic district and making it some kind of a formal gathering space. I do understand that that's a parking lot right now, but I'm wondering what the thoughts by other council members might be for the possibility of that actually becoming something of a gathering space.
Dana and I started talking about this, I don't know, six, eight months ago, probably. And I think it would lend itself really, really well to, I would call it flex space, that it could be used for parking, that it could be used in other fashions as well. But I would be in favor of looking at some sort of flexible space.
I would agree, and I like the idea of flex space. I think that makes some sense, but it could be a pretty cool spot.
So that just brings the question, does, do you need to allot any money for that? Or is that something that easily could come out of a, out of our, you know, CIP or general fund or whatever?
Yeah, just just a couple of things about that. The mayor referenced our discussion about that. It was, it was similarly a joint, or not a joint, but a chamber event that we attended there earlier in the spring, I believe it was, or early summer, I should say. And we said, wow, this is a nice facility to have. You know, one thing you might want to consider is the notion of, well, a couple of things. You've got your Historic Dublin Task Force working right now, maybe get some thoughts from them. Secondly, look at programming at first. See where the programming works and maybe drive some programming there and then see how that looks and feels. And then as you pick up some momentum or some things that really want to make themselves more, they don't have to be permanent forever kinds of things, but the ways to program that, you know, you could put a, like we do with special events, you could put a tent up, you could, you could do some programmatic things, see how it functions and then decide if that that is the best and appropriate place to kind of do that sort of thing and see how that builds. I would recommend that first and then maybe you would take time then to harden that up with some kind of facility and take a little time to study that. So maybe that's a direction for us is to take a look at programmatic type things and then look at what other structures might look like. And then you could tackle that as in the next CIP, looking out into the next five years.
Yeah, I think it's worth, it's worth thinking about, at least putting some some money towards that or some thought towards that. It used to be that we would always gather at the corner. There were spaces, but as we've infilled and that sort of thing, it's kind of disappeared. And when you try to close a street, it upsets the businesses because they lose their business. And yet when we see in Bridge Park, when you close down the street and you have that open space, it really works. You know, it makes for a lot of vitality. We're going to have Riverside Crossing Park on the other side, but there's just nothing. There's nothing on the west side. There's no place to gather and it's just the perfect spot. And I think it's a great opportunity to think about making sure that we don't let that that go. So I'd be, I'd be for having Matt or events, look at maybe starting to look at some programming and at least putting some money there in their operating budget for that. Great.
At what point is the Historic Dublin Task Force going to come forward with, I guess, a list of suggestions or vision for that area? It seems to be that we should certainly engage them in this process and understand what they want for the area. I like the idea of flex space because it's flexible and it opens the door to a lot of different possibilities. But I guess I'm curious, we've got this task force, they're whiteboarding lots and lots of ideas. At what point do those ideas get shared and put into policy?
Yeah, they were, they did have a deadline of June initially, but given what's been going on, obviously, pushed their meeting timeframe back. I think you all actually reassigned them a new date, which I, I'm pulling this out of the air. I believe it was by the end of the year to have their recommendations done. So I know that they continue to work on that.
Could we, could we put a placeholder in the CIP for 2021 or 2022? You know, 250, $300,000 or something like that with the idea that we want to do something. The water, as you said, you know, that's going to cost money, water and electric to that area. But it seems like we know we want to do it. We just don't know exactly what it would look like. But we can certainly work within a certain budget. So we could let that budget perhaps guide the process.
I think we were looking at the deployment of those things as part of the Franklin Street Extension. Megan or Matt, if you could chime in on that, but I could be wrong on that. It seemed like we were looking at that might be the most appropriate time. Obviously, if you were doing something that was just programmatic and, you know, you wanted to test, test that, we can always support that in many ways, like we do. Special events all over the city, we can, we set up a city practically for the Irish Festival. We can make that happen. But I think more permanent support to that, we were looking at, I think, as part of the Franklin Street Extension. I don't know if Megan or Matt might jump in on that or not.
I seem to recall that, Dana.
And that that timing is still a couple of years out. I think that's a little bit, I think we're out into 2022. I don't have that in my fingertips. Franklin Street Extension is 2022 construction, Dana. Okay, so I don't know, Andy, if that would meet your intent or not.
So it seemed to me that you've got some of the infrastructure planned for 2022. Let's hear from the Historic Dublin Task Force and see what their vision for the area is. And we're sort of all rowing in the same direction. We just don't know exactly what is at the end of the, at the end of the river.
And it seemed like the memo said there was enough there to make it work right now, might not make it work exactly how we wanted it to. So you know, you could move forward in that direction and then wait for the Franklin Street Extension to be finished to make it just right. But there are some options available in the vicinity.
Okay, so my takeaway is that we will nudge the Historic Dublin Task Force to take a look at that and then we'll also take a look at some programmatic things there. And then we'll also, as part of that, obviously assess that. We have some interim things we can do to support that. And then we'll look at, we'll look at the 22 through 26 CIP as well for something that might be more permanent. Should that be the recommendation or and or direction of council? Once you have another little bit more discussion about that. Does that sound right?
That sounds great, Dana. Thanks. Other items from council that they want to address this evening?
I had. Go ahead, John.
No, I was just wondering if anybody's getting the feedback that the Bridge Street street blockage is just fantastic. And people are saying, hey, we want to make this a permanent thing. Europe's finally arrived here in Dublin. And I just want to see if anybody else is getting feedback from people on the outdoor dining and how happy they are and how overjoyed they are and and safe they are at the kind of spacing that they laid out. But I'm just getting a number of people said, boy, you know, that'd be great if this became a permanent addition to the city. So blocking off the streets and having a walkable, truly walkable streetscape, so.
Yeah, John, I certainly had a couple of people tell me how much they like it, you know, so anecdotally, yeah, I mean, I haven't had, I don't think I've had anyone like, reach out to complain about it. Not really an official summary, but people seem to like it.
I think it should cause a lot of our thinking in future streetscape for these urban districts and making sidewalks different than the way that we've made them so that we don't have to close down the street and have it be an urban walkable truly area. I think in subsequent design phases, we should take note.
I, I agree with you. I agree with that because what you've done is you've created placemaking. That street has become a place and that is what we keep talking about. If we're going to use great design and utilizing placemaking, you have to have these spaces where where action happens. And John, I agree with you. I don't know how Crawford-Hoyne feels about closing down the street or how the businesses do, but what you have done is created a place and that is ideal placemaking. So you're right. Our sidewalks, we can't go, the form of these sidewalks can't be so rigid that you eliminate the ability to have that kind of vitality happen. And by trying to put bicycles and pedestrians and benches and everything on a skinny sidewalk, you eliminate the ability to do that. But now you've seen when you made the sidewalk, as broad as it is, people live there, they play there. It's a public realm because everything that they want, they own it and that's where they want to spend their time. So it has been a good lesson, I think, for all of us in design. I like the idea of shutting the street down. I'm with you, John.
And if the North Park Market opens, you're going to see a bigger desire to hang around there.
Yeah, you know, it's interesting because the way the garages are laid out and from their access from the other points, it really doesn't interfere with the streetscapes. We still get all the benefits of the parking. And I can remember discussions during the design phase that in case we close those streets for public festivals and affairs, it would all still function. Now it's sort of. With the.
Okay, other items relative to the CIP?
We're trying to help the rest.
Kathy, you had something?
I just had a couple of quick things and I had sent a quick email about on the Transportation Street One ET 17A, which was about smart parking, smart parking, Bridge Street District Parking Control Meter Equipment. What was that? And I don't know if it was in that memo because I, I didn't find it, but it was a pretty good memo you guys sent out. So was that addressed in there? Or could somebody tell me what that equipment is because we're spending, it looks like 400,000 in 2020 and another 400,000 is programmed in 2021. Is this the Derby Street?
Megan or Doug, can you address that?
It is not the Derby Street. So if it's Bridge Street, I'm sorry, I'm not looking at that memo right there.
Yeah, it lists, it lists a few things under, it says parking projects and this is on the streets, streets, streets and parking section, which is 14, I guess, number 17A, and it says parking project, it says smart parking, Bridge Street District Parking Control Meter Equipment. So I don't, it says that we're doing $400,000 worth of something right now and then 400 next year, next time. And I don't have to answer it tonight. I just, I'd sent a quick email about that and I hadn't heard back.
So we had a placeholder amount or we've used that amount in the past for electric charging stations? And we're closely monitoring the utilization of those charging stations to determine if we have any locations where we should be installing more and if there's additional grants that arrive. So that's one arise. So that means that we've identified, the other thing we've contemplated is the addition of sensors to determine and monitor utilization of parking spaces on street. So it's been more of a placeholder as opposed to having, you know, identified specific uses at the time of the CIP.
Okay, and so for 2020, there's 400,000 of that. We may or may not spend that, you're saying, sort of where we are now.
That's correct.
Okay, and then I sort of had, I want to say a bit of a, I don't want to say a similar question, but item number ET 518. This relates to all of the work that's happening out at, in the Highland-Croye 16133 interchange. And I know it's part of a very big project there and there's an item in there for the roundabout. And when I attended the information session, which was excellent, that staff conducted about updates on the 33, 161, et cetera, so forth. There was discussion about the roundabout at Highland-Croye and Post Preserve. And I see it programmed in there, but I also see a note that it says it's dependent on third-party contribution. So I would just, I don't need it tonight, just sort of some clarification. Are, we say we're programming the amount that's in there or that amount is dependent on third-party? That's my question.
The developer, the, the, the person that's potentially developing that area, I think, is the third party you're talking about.
Well, most of that's already developed. So this is a new entrance into Post Preserve. So this is, this is the repositioning of it. So I'm just curious as to.
I probably could answer that quickly.
Thank you, Paul.
Yeah, it's actually looking at the property to the, I guess, on the other side of Highland-Croye when it develops, there would be a contribution from them because that would line up with their access point. We worked very hard with Union County to coordinate that access point, that relocated Post Preserve access to whatever might happen on the Roshansky piece on the other side of the roadway. So that would be the third party. So I believe what we did is we programmed the full amount, but understanding that on the revenue side, we'd have money coming in from that third party.
Great, thank you.
My, my, follow my only final question and maybe this is a summary question, Dana, about, and maybe that's not for this evening, about the use of debt financing versus cash financing for, for the park and some of the things. And I don't know if we wish to discuss that tonight or at another point.
Any particular park project you're talking about? Is it Riverside Crossing?
I think, isn't that the only debt we're suggesting out of this short term? I believe it is, right? If I'm correct.
Well, there was water sewer potentially, but predominantly the Riverside Crossing Park had you funded the full project. I think, Matt Stifler, you want to address the, the other projects, although those are, I think what your, the direction you gave us was probably even less than what we were talking about. I think if I had to guess, the total number that we're probably looking at now as part of Riverside Crossing Park, based on your guidance tonight, is probably around the 5 to $700,000 range. Would, would that be debt financed?
We had proposed debt financing it as part of the larger project. I would still propose that we, we debt finance it in conjunction either with the 21 issuance or with a 22 inch issuance potentially. We could certainly look towards cash financing that. It just adding that much cash that early in the CIP makes those out years that much more difficult. I think we might have to restructure more than just the placeholders, depending on how much we move forward to cash finance that.
So I would just question, ask the question, please, could, could you share what those options are for us? So if we debt finance that, what, four and a half million plus whatever this 2020, whatever the few hundred thousand more that we said? That's, that would be an option. If we chose to cash finance it and we will enter the, the CIP into the, the construction balance moved forward is going to be pretty healthy, isn't it? So it was like 6 million or 6 million plus or something. So rather than issue debt, what are our options? So what would it mean to do both of those? I would like to know what, because it isn't a size, I mean, it isn't a huge amount. It's not 15 or 20 million dollars. So rather than to add to the debt load, what, what would, what would those options look like? I guess that that's sort of my question.
I would agree with you, Kathy. I would be very interested in looking at what, what would happen if we cash funded versus debt financed some of those things to our, our overall picture.
Okay, so when you say some of those things, which, just so we're clear on those things that you guys are, which.
Those are the only ones, isn't it? That's all you're proposing, isn't it, Matt? Is the park for debt financing? Did I read that right?
Correct. The four-point. Correct. The four point five million in twenty twenty one and then the six point five in twenty five. We're proposing moving some portion of that to Dana's point, somewhere between half a million and a million roughly, depending on how the details shake out.
In my mind, the those things was that four and a half million dollars plus whatever we added tonight, Dana, relative to that list of the buffet of things we chose to take at River Access, so on and so forth. Those are the, those things. It's, it's all in that park and then the extras we chose this evening.
See, that's the.
We were to debt finance, if we were not to debt finance the then five million, whatever that is, the four and a half plus change, right? The five million. If we were to cash finance that again, because the balance move forward is, is pretty darn healthy.
We could cash finance the portion, we could examine cash financing the portion that you're moving forward from twenty five to twenty one. I don't think we can examine cash financing the whole four point five million within the current structure of this CIP because it'd be five million dollars cash versus under five hundred thousand dollars debt service. So that's a completely different CIP with major projects being moved across all years. If you want to cash fund the four and a half million dollars in twenty twenty in that first year.
When you say a significantly difference, it's five million dollars. So I'm, I'm, when you say significantly different, and we're going to have a balance forward in that CIP now in excess of six million, right?
We're, we have a balance at the end of the first year currently of three point two million.
I meant going into twenty twenty one.
We have a six million dollar balance moving forward, yes. Coming out of twenty twenty one, we're projecting a balance of three point one million. So if we add four point, four and a half million dollars, we're going to be upside down too. And then we use that cash balance in all the subsequent years. In twenty twenty three, we have a balance of fifty thousand. So we're upside down the whole five million.
No, so I'm sort of asking the question then, if you're, if you're upside down a million and a half, use the general fund to supplement that. That's, that's what I'm saying.
Immediate general fund reserve?
Yeah, I mean, yeah, because we're, the general fund is, is sitting pretty high right now. We've got a good move forward. My question is, what would that look like? I'm not saying it's the right option. I just think we do have the option to look at this time and it would be a, it would be a good discussion to see what that would look like.
That clarification right there is where you were taking it.
Yeah, I'm sorry, I misunderstood. If you want to use the general fund to finance, yeah, that's absolutely an option. I'm sorry, I misunderstood. You wanted to finance it out of the capital. So that's my mistake. But yeah, we could definitely explore that option.
I think it's worth exploring. You know, a debt, to issue debt on that amount is a lot of, that's a lot of cost per dollar.
Yep.
Happy to have that discussion. The two points that I would just make are it's never been cheaper to borrow. So you know, I don't know how that factors in, but it's, it's, it's very cheap to borrow. And the second part is, you know, we, we do expect TIP revenues over time to pay us back. So we would be paying essentially the five million dollars, four and a half million dollars today versus debt financing it and hope to be paid back sometime during that repayment scheme.
On the park?
On the park, yes.
We can tip finance the park. I thought, I thought that was not a.
As, as that moves forward, there currently aren't enough TIP revenues, but I'm, I think that's a great discussion. I'll be happy to, to do that analysis.
Great, thanks, Matt. Anything else relative to CIP? I have one more discussion item for us that I hope we can press through and everyone can put their cards on the table pretty quick.
I just, there if I could, just real quick, if we're closing up the capital discussion, that I don't, I'd like to turn to Matt and say, do you think this could, I don't know that this can be ready by Monday night. We can report back Monday night, some of these things we've talked about, but probably would have a final reading and hopefully a passage, whatever that means, on the, on the second meeting in September. Matt, is is that what you're thinking? Just so we're all managing that expectation?
I think that's accurate, Dan. I think there are a couple of things we need to follow up on, probably not a whole work session worth. We could have that discussion potentially at the fourteenth and then pass it at the twenty eighth without requiring another work session would be my recommendation, hope.
Is that okay with council?
Everybody thumbs up? Okay.
Thank you. Sorry about that.
Thanks, Dana. Appreciate it, Matt. Okay, so there was some discussion, you know, we have talked about this in-person meeting, virtual meetings, what would trigger what and you know, how we would move forward. There was a bit of discussion about would we go with the color of the county being orange, red, yellow, what have you. Obviously, our county color has changed. I don't know that it won't change back or, or what that would look like, but I would, I want to have quickly a conversation about comfortability of meeting in person versus remote. And I believe that Mark Clark is on the call here and he has, may have some information for us. They did some hybrid work over the past week or two, I believe. It might have been last week, last Thursday perhaps. And you know, would we be interested in, in looking at a hybrid model? But first of all, I'd like to take council's temperature is what, what is it that you want to do? We certainly want to be good stewards of safety. We want to be good stewards of community engagement. We want to be good stewards of one another and, and, but I need to know from you all what that means to you.
I think that, you know, obviously in-person is going to be better than not in-person. That being said, it's really difficult for us to have visitors and guests in current council chambers. So it's almost like we're remote anyway. You know, so I guess I'm not in a huge hurry for us all to be back there, given that we have to do our public engagement process remotely anyhow. I like the idea of having committee meetings because they tend to be smaller and they don't have that public engagement piece typically. Those in-person, because I do think the conversation is a little bit richer when you can be together and have a little bit more of a natural flow with each other. I mean, I think we want to try to get back to being together as quickly as we reasonably can. I just, I'm not sure we're quite there yet. I'd like to hear a little bit more about the hybrid thing, though. Not sure I understand what that would look like.
Okay, let's get through everyone's thoughts and then we'll, then we'll talk about what the options are available to us. And and I agree with you, Christina, it is difficult to engage the public in council chambers in a safe manner. There was also some comments about some, some challenges, not things that can't be overcome with relative to cameras in the plexiglass present some additional challenges of, of capturing people in not just reflection. So other thoughts from council members?
I, I had the opportunity to have a board meeting about three weeks ago and it was the hybrid meeting. And it was interesting because about half the members showed up and was physically there and the rest of them were at their home. And it was sort of an interesting meeting. I, I sort of leaned towards, as Christina said, I think you get a richer conversation when we're all in the same room. So as our colors go down, I would be more interested in seeing us get back together in council chambers. But if that's not the case, then this is all fine with me. Thank you.
Thanks, John.
So I agree with everything that's been said. I am not in a hurry to go back to chambers. I, for me, it's more consistency and, and not, I don't want to have to go, go back to chambers and then a month later, we go to red again as a county and then we go back to remote. I prefer consistency. The hybrid model, I think, is something that should be implemented, not just for the purposes of this pandemic, but long-term, I believe that if one of us is ill, but not ill enough to participate in a group discussion, we don't necessarily have to be absent from a meeting as long as the law allows some folks to meet in person and other folks to be remote. If Greg wants to join when he's on vacation or a couple of us get back from traveling to Florida and, you know, we're worried about affecting other council members' health and we prefer to stay home for that reason, we, the, the show must go on. When, you know, months ago, when, when I was asking about the possibility of being able to be included remotely in a meeting where I envisioned basically we have a screen in chambers that the council members that are not in attendance in chambers, we see their picture. They have a microphone, obviously. We have cameras. They can see everything that's going on. So they're essentially just joining us virtually. I think that's something we should pursue and have a robust system that is reliable and works for everybody. Definitely in the new chambers, when you know, you're talking about technology and getting Doug involved. I, I gotta believe that technology exists and we just don't have it yet. My two cents.
Great, thank you, Andy. Others?
Somebody, and so I, I guess I'm not familiar with what hybrid is. Are we worried about the seven of us being in a space big enough that we can be separated, but close enough that we can have a meeting? Is it some of us would not be there or is it the public is remotely connected in and we are all in the same place?
My understanding is that some of us would be there and some of us would not.
That, yeah, that's correct, I think, for a hybrid meeting.
We're in, we're in one of the environment where we're going to be in this space for a while. It could be six months. It could be nine months. It could be a year. You know, having in prior lives worked with in global organizations where you would have half the management team from outside the US on the big screen, just like this. And the other people would be in a room or vice versa. They'd be in a room and you join. You know, it can be a very natural thing if it's done right. It really can. It can work quite well. And I know, I know that's exactly what the team is working on. But I think because we are, I mean, we're going to be in this space for a while, as far as we know. So I, I, I would prefer that we have the opportunity to, if we can, if we can meet in, meet in person rather than say, let's just wait until it's done. So if we can arrive at a hybrid model where we can say, okay, the numbers are, make sense and we can with some relative advanced time, whether that's a few days, say we're going to meet in person. But I, I think we're just going to be in a bit of a back and a forth environment. And I think that's, I think every organization is going to be in that type of an environment. If we can.
Here's, I guess, what, here's what I don't understand about the hybrid. And, and I get it, you know, when I've been on, I know we all do a fair amount of these conference calls and conference conversations and meetings and virtual, all this and the other thing. Whoever's in the same room has a different experience than the people who are not in that same room. And so if we're going to have a hybrid model, is there a, if the idea is to dissipate our numbers, like Kaufman had twenty five percent of the kids in the school today and they'll have twenty five tomorrow and twenty five the next day and twenty five the next day. Are we like on a rotation? Four of us are in the room and three of us are not? And then that rotates? Each time we meet, it's a different person because I would not want any one of us to be cloaked with the perception that we don't care as much as the other people. Like if we really cared, we'd show up. And the people who don't care, they're at home because you can tell by looking at who's at home and who's there. I mean, I just wonder, is there going to be a, and does that that dissipation of, or you know, the dispersment, does that include staff? Is half the staff going to be there? Is half council going to be there? Are we on a revolving schedule? I get it with a board meeting and things like that where people aren't necessarily, I mean, we're, we're, we're responsible to people that have, that voted for us.
Right. I think one of the intentions is that if my son, if there, if a COVID case popped up on the soccer team, right, and he came home and he had been exposed, right, so that he would need to quarantine for, you know, seven to ten days, whatever that number is that would be determined, and it would not necessarily be appropriate for me to come and be with all of you. Because my son now has some exposure and we live in the same house and we share the same dishes that that I might not come with you. So then I would call in remotely during that period of time. I think it's more of a safety measure for one another than it is anything else. And we would have to disclose that and say, you know.
What does that mean that, so if none of us, if none of our staff or none of us are feel we've been kind of isolation or whatever they call it, self-isolated, are we going to be in that council chambers with seven of us and the public is going to be there? I mean, are we going to keep, how do we do, like, how do we manage all that? Like, do we, if none of us are self-quarantined, then all seven of us show up, which we did a few times. Are we continuing to leave, you know, the public, if you want to comment, you stay out in your car, we'll call you when you can come in. Are we still doing those things? Or are we just like, well, the hybrid part of this is if one of us is quarantined, we can call in as opposed to missing the meeting?
No, I think the public would not be brought into the room other than for the period of time in which they were participating. So I don't know that they'd have to wait in their car, but maybe they would wait in the lobby or maybe they would wait in some other area until their portion of participation came to fruition. And, and I, you know, I, I don't know all the answers. And basically what I'm looking for from you guys is, do you want to, do you want to look at these hybrid solutions? We can direct Mark to write a memo and outline to us how these things happen? Or, or do we not have interest in a hybrid? That's essentially, it's a thumbs up, thumbs down thing. Or do we have interest in hybrid? Or do we not?
Well, I don't think, I even know what hybrid looks like, for one. I'm with Greg. I, I don't know what that looks like, but, but one of the, I mean, I always like the personal conversation. I like being in the room with all of you and having this conversation. But most importantly, the best part about that is the public is also in the room having the conversation or hearing the conversation or making their comments. Even though I don't care for these Zoom meetings, I have to admit that public participation has been much greater in these Zoom meetings and the, and the viewership has been much greater. People feel that they have access to us on a much more personal basis this way. It's not my favorite way, but I also think that during this time, it's a great social experiment to understand how our government works and let people see us as individual screens, how we talk, how we, how we communicate. This is a great educational experience for our public. So even though I, I would prefer to be talking to each one of you face to face, I think this kind of works in many ways. So I don't know what the hybrid looks like, but I can't imagine being split up more than this.
I think the hy, the hybrid allows you to bring in the public.
Well, or Mayor Grooms, when she's not sure she wants to be in a meeting when her son has been, so you know, again, let me rewind to my, my conversation, my brother works for Live Technologies. He's a contractor for the city of Dublin. He's doing a lot of the AV work in the court, the, the court area, the mayor's court, the new city building there he's done working. And I went to Florida. I told all of you, I wasn't sure that I should come back. I thought that I could join the meeting via Zoom when you guys were meeting in person. I mean, it's twenty twenty. We have the technology, right? Can we do that? No, we can't do that. We don't have the capability of you attending a meeting. You can watch the meeting, Andy, but you cannot participate in the meeting. You cannot weigh in on any of the conversations. You're going to be considered absent from that meeting. And my feeling is that's not right. I'm capable and so Mayor Grooms, she's airy on the side of caution. She doesn't want to be around us for our personal health concerns. So she wants to participate in the meeting as a mayor. We should have the technology available to do that. And as I said, just pretend that the, that we have a vaccine, we're three years from now. We should have that capability. And I, I understand that I, I like to be with all of you. I like to see your body language. There's, it's more fluid. It makes a lot more sense, more comfortable. But this has shown us to Jane's point that you get some pretty surprising results from technology. And you have higher attendance, higher engagement than we did before. So, you know, while we can, we can sort of rush to judgment and say, nobody's going to watch. The reality is we have more participation. So I'm in favor of, I, I'm not in favor of a hybrid in the sense that we say twenty five percent of council members can only be in chambers at any one time. None of that. It doesn't necessarily have to be that structured. It's, it's a. It doesn't necessarily have to be that structured. It's, it's a safety valve, if you will. It's an option on the table that we use when and if the opportunity presents itself.
Okay, well, um, other thoughts that folks want to voice? Um, di, differing opinions for this or or do we want to, uh, you know, allow Mark the opportunity, he could either explain it to us or, or provide a memo to us that would um, outline these items and what the associated costs might be in, in, you know, kind of the, the peaks and valleys of the opportunity and.
Yes, I would say that'd be a good idea.
Yeah, I would agree with that. Yes.
I'd agree with that too. It sounds like you got the votes for exploring a hybrid concept.
Okay.
And if there's a, and if there's a city that's doing it now that we could go watch it, that would be great too.
I.
They get identified that.
I'm, I'm on the call. I'd, I'd be happy to explain um, our current progress, where we're at and what we think the next steps are.
I'd like to hear what he has to say.
I would too, but I, I would also like, I would like a memo because I'd like to be able to digest it as well. Um, and I'd like to be able to see it. Um, I'm, I'm happy to sit here with you guys, no problem, but I'd also like, if, either we do it and we listen to him now and we follow up with a memo or do the memo and then have the discussion. Either way, it would be better to do both parts.
However you prefer.
You guys, thumbs up on memo or thumbs up on outlining verbally? Outline verbally? Memo? Memos? Okay, I think we all want to have the, the opportunity to understand it. So um, Mark, is that okay with you to, to write us a, up a, a memo that we could kind of critically think through before we have this conversation together and to come to a decision?
Absolutely, I'd be delighted to.
Delighted? Wow, that bar's high.
Well, we're anxious, we're anxious to get to next steps. And right now, we're in a place where we're ready to show council members what we have.
Perfect. Okay, well, we will look forward to that. You can send it to Jenny Delgado and she can drop it in Dropbox for us and we can have it in short order. We'll also work at getting it on a subsequent agenda where it's appropriate. I don't know if we want to do this in a council meeting or um, or our next work session. But uh, truthfully, I don't have the calendar in front of me, but we'll pick a date that would, would suitable for that. Is everybody okay with that?
Sounds good.
Because then I, I don't want this to be my decision. This has to be our decision. Um, okay, anything else for the good of the order before we adjourn this meeting?
I only have one thing and Thursday is Jenny Delgado's birthday. And so I, we want to thank her for all her help, everything she does and wish her a happy.
Yes, yes, yes.
And I know you're on here Jenny, so happy birthday.
Thank you.
Happy birthday Jenny.
Thank you. Happy birthday Jenny.
Okay, well, everyone have a wonderful what's left of the evening and uh, we will stand adjourned.